Okay, it is November 12th, 2020, it's 7:00 PM. This is the regular meeting of the Arundel Planning Board for this date. We are meeting by Zoom and in attendance we have, from the planning board, we have James Lowery, Tom McGinn, Jens Bergen, Susan Roth, Marty Kane, and Roger Maron. And myself, I'm the Chair of the Board.
Love you.
So we do, we do have a quorum, so we will move directly into the meeting. The first item on the meeting is for the approval of the agenda. Then there's the approval of the minutes of October 22nd. We have public comment, which is for those, those citizens that would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda. Then we have pending applications. The first item is Oak Ridge Terrace subdivision, a discussion with action, a replacement plan for the street trees on Oak Terrace Ridge. Item number two is Pinecrest Acres, a preliminary subdivision application, a discussion of the sidewalk. Then we have new applications. Item number one of the new applications is Williams Auto Sales and Repair Plenary Site Plan Review. Item number two is Cludia Mobile Home Park Subdivision Sketch Plan. Item number three is Arundel's Keep Preliminary Subdivision Application. Then we have Land Use Ordinance Amendments that we will be discussing and hopefully taking action on. Changes to the Land Use Ordinance Section 8615 and 8635 Special Exception Criteria. Discussion with action amendments to timber harvesting. Item number three is to schedule a public hearing for proposed ordinance amendments. Then we will have whatever other business the town planner has for us, and then we'll all go home. Well, we won't go home, most of us are already there. We'll turn our computers off and go, go do something else. Jens, you are muted. I shouldn't have told him, disconnected himself. Oh, no, there he is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
Hello?
Jamie made the motion, who seconded it? Tom seconded the motion? Tom, you are also muted. Thank you. Is there any discussion about the agenda? Hearing none, those in favor, Jamie?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Jens?
Yes.
It is unanimous. We have approval of the minutes for October 22nd.
Tom.
Second.
Roger made a motion, Susan seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, Jamie?
abstain.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Tom? Marty?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
I mean, I, it is six in favor, one abstention. The next item, public comment. If there's anyone here that's a citizen of the town that would like to comment on anything that is on the agenda and that is not on the agenda. If there's something you, you would like us to bring up at a future point, we can discuss. Seeing none, I will move right on. The next item, pending applications, Oak Ridge Terrace Subdivision, a discussion with action, the replacement plan for street trees on Oak Ridge Terrace, and the re-establishment of the vegetative perimeter buffer on Lot 4 off Laurel Lane, tax map 17, Lot 5 in the R2 and Shoreland Zone. Oak Ridge Terrace LLC is the owner, Walter Woods is the agent. Ted, have you been in touch with Mr. Woods?
Ted's muted.
Ted, unmute yourself. Ted, you're muted. There we go. Gee. There you go, okay. So, um, the only thing, Walter and I had talked about this, I think, at the sidewalk. And the board had talked at the sidewalk, and the question is whether we had discussed what we were going to do. And, uh, so the board's got a, we really haven't had a discussion since that sidewalk of how the board wants to proceed. I came up with two strategies in order to take care of the issue. Making the assumption that really what we're talking about here, given the layout of the design, and given the, um, we're talking about the internal, let's first start with Oak Ridge Terrace. Given the internal layout of the design, the existing vegetated stand, the probability of actually being able to re-establish any kind of vegetation stand in front of those buildings, and whether it would be, um, whether it would be, uh, effective. What I had recommended, and what we had recommended originally was just put in street trees every 50 feet.
And that's what I did, Ted. I have street trees every 25 to 30 feet at this point.
What are the street trees?
A combination of hardwoods, maples, oaks. They've actually been in place for the last week or so. And we actually also put some, planting some other trees in the cul-de-sac area.
Yeah.
And there, we have about four or five other trees still potted that we're trying to find a place for them. I planted, I just strategically planted them in areas to close up the driveway areas, so we could meet the definition of the ordinance in reference to the driveways. I planted some evergreen trees, just backside of the street trees. And in between lots 14 and 13, I planted some evergreens. There's a, there was just an opening that was fairly clear between Lot 14 and 13. I planted five to seven trees there, just to, which has nothing to do with the street tree or the ordinance. I just planted a couple there for screening as well.
Okay.
And so on, so I've done, I've done those trees, and if you want to come down and take a look, and I've got five, six left that I can put in wherever, more than happy to do whatever.
Okay, yeah, I tried to go down there twice, and each time there were a lot of equipment down there working, so I couldn't get in. So I looked at Lot 4, dealt with that thing. But I'll be glad to go back there, probably next week, that's okay.
Yeah, they're, they're all there, and whatever trees are left, I can put wherever you like them.
Okay.
Put them, like I said, 25 to 30 feet apart from each other, is what was a recommendation by the office, who we purchased all the plantings from. And the calip is roughly two, two and a half to three inch in size, or roughly 14 to 16 foot trees. At that point, they'll fill in nice, you know, in that area.
Okay, come take a look, that'd be great. Put it more than I would have put it.
Want it to look nice.
Good deal, okay. I couldn't be looking forward to taking a look at that. The other issue was Lot 4, you know, you and I have talked about Lot 4 on Laurel Lane. And I was out there today because I had to do an inspection over another project. And they're still working there, they still have, actually, they had the lumber truck there. So like, you can't do anything until those guys get out of there. But it's really a narrow area there that you have to, to provide a buffer there. And I don't know if you have a plan for that, but I came up with a quick plan, I think you saw that, I got it off to you.
I didn't see anything from you, Ted, unfortunately, I'm not getting your emails. I still, I'm not getting them, I haven't received a thing from you at all.
No, wow.
So it must, whether you're sending it, you know, punching in my email.
I sent it to your new one, love to fish.
That's correct, I have not received anything from you, and I've checked my spam too, just to double check that. But if we, if I could talk further on Lot 4, please?
Yeah.
Lot, Lot 4 is, so the border of the sand is not owned by me. Lot 4 is owned by Eric Christiansen. I went and talked with him today. When I, when I cleared Lot 4 originally, I only cleared a 25 foot opening for a driveway. If you're facing the lot, it was on the right side based on the planned location that was approved by the town. I left the vegetation, the 25 foot buffer from either side. Mr. Erickson, Mr. Christiansen, who I spoke with this morning, said that because he changed the location of the driveway, moved it to the left side for better placement for the house, he said he had a conversation with Jim Nagle, which then issued the permit, they moved the driveway to the opposite side. And I told Eric that he's going to need to replant that section of that piece of property that he cleared. And he was aware of that as well. He just wants to know what you want him to plant, and, and he'll re-vegetate that, obviously, because if there is a violation in reference to that issue, you know, it should not be against the developer. It should be just, you know, warranted that he can't get his occupancy until he re-vegetates that one section. And I've mentioned that to him, that I'm having a meeting this evening in reference to that, and the board is going to expect him to do that. And I also said I do have five to seven trees left, that I'd be more than happy to sell him if he wants to plug in there and put in there after the fact. So he, he wanted to know what the board wants to do and so on. But really, that should be Mr. Christiansen's issue, not Walter Woods's issue.
I would, I would tend to disagree, Walter. Because of the association, it becomes an association issue. And at this point, you represent the association, so it is your issue to have to deal with.
What are you going to do? No, no, I could deal with this, not an issue. I can make sure he puts whatever in there. I don't have a problem.
Yeah, our, whatever. I'll be here. Yeah, I know how to lock up.
Whoever's talking, please mute yourself.
I don't have a problem with, you know, with making sure Mr. Christiansen does what he wants. But again, you know, he owns the property, he cut that vegetation. As far as I'm concerned, I just think the code enforcement, Jim should just let him know that he's going to need to re-vegetate that, based on whatever plan the town wants to take it. I'll oversee it, make sure it's done, not an issue. I'll be on that site anytime that's necessary for me to be on that site. So, but again, I did not cut that down, he was aware of that. And, and he had discussion with Mr. Nagle to move the driveway, which then he, then ended up cutting 50 to 60 feet open. And I'm sure, you know, Jim mentioned to him that he'd have to re-vegetate that, of which Eric did state that he knew he had to do something, but he just didn't know what. And I told him, that needs to be a vegetative buffer. Left a 25 foot vegetative buffer in that area, you know, for that home. So that's, that's what I told him, I think the plan of what he's going to want. But if, if Ted feels that we can do street trees and, you know, maybe, you know, step them, step them back, he's only going to get three to four trees in that area. Because of, because it's only 25 to 30 feet of space there, that needs to be re-vegetated.
I was thinking about something a little, little more dense than street trees in that issue, because that's the outside buffer of the whole project.
That's correct. I completely agree with that, I left that 25 foot buffer from day one. And again, I'm not going to be responsible to pay for that, but I will definitely oversee and make sure Mr. Christiansen does. But I can only do that if the, if the town code enforcement's willing to say, you're not getting it until this is taken care of. As the association member overseeing that, I will make sure that is taken care of. But there needs to be something to block it away from the, from the town to say, this is what needs to be done prior to occupancy.
Does the board have any other thoughts on that? I'll get you, Dolly. Okay, does the board have any questions regarding Lot 4? Okay. Dolly, you had a question?
I do, in regards to the driveway being moved, how does that affect the road and the corner? When that person got approval to put the driveway on Laurel Lane, it was up closer to the entrance to Oak Ridge Terrace, and now it's right on the corner. So, you know, how?
Excuse me, Dolly, it moved to the opposite corner, it's actually further away now from the intersection of Oak Ridge Terrace and Laurel Lane.
And it's, it's. Right, it's, it's, it's more on the corner, opposed to being kind of parallel with the exit of Oak Ridge Terrace.
It was, yeah, the plan board approved it with access of Lot 4 to Laurel Lane, but Laurel Lane's existing driveway was actually physically closer to the intersection of Oak Ridge Terrace, of which.
I'm getting that, I am getting that.
But it's further down now, so it's not close to the corner.
It's, it's.
Which makes it safer, I feel.
It's, it's right on the corner now, though.
No.
By you moving it down, is that, is the driveway going to be where the COVID is right now?
Exactly.
So it's, it's moved to the corner of Laurel Lane.
It's moved, if you're facing the lot, it's moved to the front left corner of the property.
Which is the corner of Laurel Lane.
Further away from Oak Ridge Terrace.
Right, which is on the corner of Laurel Lane.
Or, she's talking about that the, the turn of Laurel Lane, not the corner of Oak Ridge Terrace. So it's now going like a dead turn into the driveway.
You know, that was really a concern of mine from the beginning. And I thought that core, that, you know, that kind of corner was going to be straightened out a little bit because of the, you know, the cars coming out of Oak Ridge Terrace and that being a corner right there. And now we have a driveway right on that corner, which, you know, I, I know the driveway was up further. I know we're talking about buffer trees, but, you know, are there penalties? Or you can just do what you want, when you want, and let's fix it by replanting big oak trees?
Can I just restate that Jim Nagle was notified of this? Jim Nagle approved this by the town for the driveway permit. Otherwise, Mr. Christiansen would not have been able to get his permit. So I would say that, that's a, that's a discussion and a question for the code enforcement. Because Mr. Christiansen said, he met with code enforcement prior to the permit, approved the move of, moving of the driveway and, and cutting those trees. I only cut what was approved by the town. Mr. Erickson, at the end of the day, cut those other trees outside of my jurisdiction with approval from Jim Nagle. So I, I don't know where that stands, I think that's a code enforcement issue, and he needs to address that.
Ted, can you check with Jim on that? Yes, thank you.
And Walter, the, the trees do look wonderful in the development, they do. My concern is that driveway on that corner. You know, it is.
You're talking, just so I can clarify, Dolly, we're not talking the corner, we're talking the curve of Laurel Lane.
Correct, correct. None of those trees were cut when, when you were grading the, the road. I had advised to cut, you know, so, so if you're going up to your development on the left-hand side of Laurel Lane, right before Lot 4's driveway, there's a bunch of trees that make it a blind driveway. And, you know, when it was closer to Oak Ridge Terrace's exit, you know, it was kind of more of a straightaway there. It wasn't so much on that corner, and, and now it just makes it even more blind.
Well, we did, we did meet with, um, we met with Public Works, we met with the engineers for the town. We all walked that site, and the road, they all feel that all the driveways have proper site distance based on the speed limit to access Laurel Lane from that area, so they had no issues. And, and the actual, just so the board understands, because I don't believe the full board was at this meeting, Ted, I think you were there, is that Roger suggested that we move the road in and out a little bit to take out some of the curvature of the road, and also create more shoulder width, and that's what we did. So we didn't physically road specifically in the center of the right of way. Roger wanted us to increase shoulders on either side, so we had it re-engineered and laid out to the center line, so we could do that to meet Public Works', you know, concerns.
I didn't see that at all, because when you had the, the pins in there, or the, the wooden stakes, those wooden stakes, those stayed.
That's correct, those, those didn't move, Dolly.
So how did the road move, Walter?
The road moved because the Public Works wanted to move. So what we had in the center between those stakes, there were these little spikes with little, um, orange, you know, crystals on it. So what, what Roger did is we spray painted offset of those areas of where he wanted to move the, shift the road to create more of a shoulder for that purpose, and that's all we did. We didn't change the stakes, we used the center line that was done. And that was at Roger's approval and his discussion on what he wanted. So we built it the way Roger wanted it to meet the town's, the town's goal.
I, I'm, I, I didn't see that, that, that road shifted over to the left at all. I think it shifted out to give that Lot 4 more room to build that.
Actually, it actually shifted because in front of the Clookey's property, just, just.
Oh, you snubbed there, you cut their driveway off four feet.
That's why we had to shift the road.
You shifted it to the Clookey's.
It was close, again, Dolly, I'm not, I'm not here to argue that. If there's an issue, I would think the town needs to, you know, bring that up with Public Works. Public asks us to do that, and that's what we did. We're following what the engineer's asked us to do, that's what we did.
So this is just a real concern of mine before Phase 2 goes forward. You know, if, if more houses are going to be put in, that road, I feel, is a hazard the way that it is. There's a curve there, you have a driveway on that curve now, and you have cars coming out, you know, beyond that. So, I mean, I think all of that is, I hope they take that into consideration before Phase 2 is actually moving forward.
That, again.
Thank you, Dolly.
You're welcome.
So for the board, related to Lot 4, I'll, I'll get to you in just a second, Susan. For the board related to Lot, uh, yeah, Lot 4, which, which moved the driveway after having talked to Jim Nagle. I think we should have the town planner talk to the code enforcement officer and tell him not to issue any permits, either building or occupancy, until that buffer has been restored.
Lot 4.
Yes, Lot 4, and that's, that's what I want to know about from the, from the rest of the board. How do you feel about that idea?
I can go along with that.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
And that's on Lot 4 specifically, correct?
Lot 4 specifically.
I would agree with that, thank you.
Susan?
I have no problem. If Jim Nagle said it was okay to move that, make the move, I have no problem with just making sure that he repopulates the, uh, what's been taken out and returns it to its true vegetative state.
Jamie?
Yep, I agree.
Tom?
Yeah, I agree as well.
Roger? You said, I, I already got yours, sorry, Roger. Where's Marty?
Uh, when did Jim supposedly made all these changes?
Walter, any idea when that happened?
I can only, Mr. Christiansen told me when he got his building permit, he asked to move the driveway at that time, that's, that's what Mr. Christiansen told me. I've not had a conversation with Jim on this, which I, what he said, but that's what I understand.
Thank you. Jens?
Yeah.
Well, if things were done in accordance with the directives of Jim Nagle, then frankly, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm going to question it. I don't have, yeah, a recollection based on our sidewalk of the circumstances of Lot 4 that are being discussed. So, I mean, I think I have to rely on the fact that the town's code enforcement officer was involved in the decision-making process, and, and the developer acted based on that.
Oh, yeah, and I agree, this is, this is more related to the, the owner being able to get an occupancy permit before he finishes buff, putting up the buffer on the, where it's supposed to be as part of his original terms.
No trouble with that.
Okay, you got that, Ted?
I think we lost him.
No, he's, he's.
There he is. So Rich, I do think Ted should confirm what Jim said, and just make sure that what was understood was what Jim intended, and that everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
Is there a record of that anywhere? Is, would there be like a permit to change that driveway?
Yes. Jim Nagle would have had to have given him a permit.
Okay.
There you go, Ted.
So where I'm going to butter up that, I wouldn't have got notice of that? I'm going to butter up that property?
Ted, would Dolly have been notified about that, the permit to move the driveway? I don't think there's any permit to move the driveway, like what there is, is there's a building permit. That's what there is. That's all that Jim would be dealing with, is a building permit. So there, he sends out the notice of, uh, the notice to all the butters about a building permit being issued, but he's not going to send out a notice that there's been a change in the site plan.
I didn't know the town sent out notices on building permits.
Yep.
Yep. I didn't know that.
Would they? So Jim would, I, I guess we need to clarify whether or not Jim told him it was okay to move the driveway. Right. Yeah.
I think that's a simple, that's a question.
That is, that is the question.
I mean, there's a.
Dolly, did you, did Dolly receive a notice of a building permit?
When did she go?
I don't know, she fell off. Susan, you had a question?
Yes, I did, the initial conversation was about the buffer. And we talked about what buffer is, buffer is not. Last time I was on there, I get, I asked to be raised out of public conversation. Currently, the way that now the vegetation's been cut, and you've been talking about putting it back, the house is basically going to be where it's built, and where it's gone now is rather large and level to the street. So it's up higher than, it's almost as high as Oak Ridge Terrace entrance as it's done. The buffer that would need to be put on, I can see completely into, from my windows, because of the way that the house is now built and oriented, what does a buffer mean? We talked about that, has there been a definition created yet versus it just being a line of like, oak trees are not going to do it, is it conifers, is it, what is it?
Ted? Oh, it's 75%, well, here's the interesting thing. It's a 75 to 90% visual blockage as a buffer. That's what we defined later on, after these, these buffers were put into place. And that is the definition of a buffer in the zoning ordinance, or excuse me, in the land use ordinance.
So that area where that, the trees have now been removed because the driveway was moved and now is across from the Clookey's completely versus being on the corner, those were developed, thick, huge oak trees and pine trees. Now they're going to be put back, similar to what was put in, which is lovely vegetation that was planted in front of mine, about five to seven to 10 years, there'll be a buffer or something to block view, but not until that time. So I'm just curious what's going to be put back there, so that the entire Oak Ridge situation is going to be, again, it's 10 to 10, like, maybe five to 10 years before any of this is going to be redone. So what, what's going to be planted there?
We have a situation like that, what the planning board does is, they usually do it to a level of six to eight feet, if, and which often isn't sufficient in many cases. But the problem is you've only got so much nursery stock you can, you can get of a certain size if you aren't doing tree spades or anything like that. So there's always going to be a lag time between when a buffer is established, if it, if it, which is why we usually try to do natural vegetation, because it's 30 years old or it's 40 years old. It has, it has some dense, it, it density, it has some, some, it has some mass to it that actually can do some visual obstruction. The problem is that when it's declared or there's dead, dead vegetation, or it doesn't have enough conifers in your, it's, and you're trying to re-establish or you're trying to augment it, it's going to take time for it to fill in.
So we, we just, I don't know who's not muted, but it's kind of really rude. So, um, the fact that the, the buffer across the street from me is the, the original buffer, which is all dead, and I was talking about this many times, dead, leaned over, small little trees, because the larger trees are above it. Once all that's there, it's not really a buffer anymore. So that's what I'm saying for, for definition, for the town moving forward, to define what a live buffer is versus it being just what's left behind. Because what's left behind in the buffer for me is garbage. So it's not Walter's fault, that's the way that it is, and now he's following the ordinance, but the ordinance across the street from me on the property that is no longer his, is garbage. And that's following the ordinance of the town. So, creating what you're saying, I want to keep a buffer, the buffer is basically leaned over trash trees.
Well, I, I'm not sure I would agree that it's all trash trees, I mean, there's a. Well, I, I, I'm not sure I would agree that it's all trash trees. I mean, there's a lot of, what, what you have is you have a lot of mature trees or mature ring trees, second growth. That, uh, basically, because they've been in so dense, they weren't competition with, with each other, so they grew up very quickly and their understory died off.
Right.
That's what happens. So it's not like the junk trees, but they are not providing any vegetation at the eye level. That's, that's essentially.
House level, yes. Not just eye level.
I say eye level, I mean from within your house, from your first floor elevation. They don't provide anything.
Right.
And that's, that's, that's often an issue. So the issue for the planning board, and I think we discussed this last time, was having to do a little more evaluation instead of right now, the way the ordinances are written, is you do twenty-five feet and you've achieved the buffer. Unless, unless there's no vegetation there, you've, you've got a twenty-five foot buffer, which often can only accommodate one tree if you've got mature trees. Um, and I think, as, as you remember, Susan, we talked last time extensively about how that's inadequate.
Right.
The object is to actually buffer developments from each other. Twenty-five feet is inadequate. And fifty feet, and, and depending on the vegetation, fifty feet may be totally inadequate. And in some places, depending on what the, what the nature of the trees are, ten feet would be adequate. It, it all depends. It's, it's gotta be site-based. It can't be, you know, a simple, uh, dimension. It's gotta be based on, on what the tree, what the, the density of the trees are at that time.
So bringing it back to site four, to lot four, what is the plan for that vegetation, since there's hardly any room on the corner between where the house is going to be built, the driveway is going to be built, and the corner to Oak Ridge Terrace and Laurel Lane?
Yeah, that's gonna have to have some narrow veg- narrow conifers that have to go in there. They're not gonna be cheap. They'll probably be about five to six feet tall, probably five. Can't get much at this time of year, actually.
That's gonna be the.
Or he's down right now.
Right now.
But, uh, it would have to, uh, there are a couple of species that I respect that Walter didn't get, um, which is great. Um, but Serbian spruce or probably the Canadian, um, probably it would be, uh, it's so big though. There are a number of different ones. My concern with that area is got a lot of shade in it still.
It does.
Yeah, it's got a lot of shade, and the usual species that you wanna put in there are sun lovers. So you don't wanna, it makes it, if they don't get enough sun, they get raggedy. And they don't work as a buffer. So it has to be something that they could tolerate shade. Um, actually, you've got Canadian, uh, balsam fir, which actually gets pretty dense, a lot better than our, our balsam fir. We also have, um, hemlock. Frank, frankly, hemlock does very well. You have to trim it. You have to top it at some point before it gets to be ninety feet tall. But if it's given enough work from the, the side, it, it should fill in pretty well. And then there's also, as I said, Serbian spruce, uh, excuse me, yes, Serbian spruce, which is, um, it gets about forty feet tall. The thing is, you don't wanna put in something that's gonna grow fast and tall and then umbrella underneath. That's the issue. We could put it, uh, the other thing we could put in would be, uh, arborvitae's, but arborvitae's are cotton candy to deer, and you have a lot of deer up there. They'll just wipe that out.
So as you were talking as a board and you were saying, as a, as an agreement to have a conversation with Jim about the things, I'd like to put in that conversation of like, what would be, what would be considered as appropriate plantings before he says, I'll just plant. So just kind of to make it go from there, because right now, it's what, it's whether accidental or not accidental, if the driveway moved or not driveway moved, it's done. And so now we have to live with the consequence of it up the street.
Yeah, the, the, uh.
What the board is telling me is that we've gotta, we've, I've gotta come up, well, I do have a plan, but I've gotta come up with a plan and talk to Mr. Christensen and talk to Jim about implementing that plan of putting in the vegetation that was taken out.
Mr. Christensen is open-minded to that as well. He was, he understood the position, uh, Ted, so you know. So I think if you give him that plan, he'll work with that and, and take care of that. And I, I do know this gentleman, he's, I've known him for many years. He's honorable, and he'll do what's necessary, you know, that's required.
Okay, good. I also have to make sure I, I don't, you know, the other thing that's, that's tricky there is to make sure I don't, we don't pick any species that are gonna basically shut off all the sun, which is another thing, because he's got a driveway there. You don't want an icing condition there. So it's gonna be a little interesting. It's gonna be site-specific.
He's got a driveway there, but he's gonna have to, uh, address the fact that if, uh, we need to know whether or not Jim told him he could move the driveway.
Well, that's the first thing. The second thing is to fix the problem.
Yep.
Question?
Yeah, Marty.
Anything of deciduous, like you're burning bushes or anything else, which is totally screening, uh, spring, summer, and fall, and still leaves somewhat area for, uh, um, non-icing?
Um, yeah, well, you know, any kind of branching pattern that is, that is considered to be part of buffering. I mean, you don't need, you don't need to have, um, leaves or, or needles to, to buffer. I mean, if you have a thick enough, if you have a thicket, that can actually do the same thing. Uh, there's not enough depth in that location to use such kind of vegetation. It's, there's a certain level of certain depth you have to get to in order to get all that branching and weaving branching, and it takes time. So I think in that situation, I mean, the immediate, the immediate reaction with, with the immediate result would be probably a conifer of some sort. That's, that's what you would need. And so it's gonna be, uh, uh, I have to go in there and walk. I, I couldn't walk around it because there were a lumber truck there today. So, um, but I've been there before.
Well, I think we're sort of getting ahead of ourselves anyway. I mean, I think the first thing you need to do is to get with Jim and, uh, with Mr. Christensen and figure out what was said and how to proceed so that.
But even, even based on what we said, Mr. Christian needs to buffer.
Yeah, I, I totally agree.
Ted can give him some direction at that point.
I agree with that, too.
He's aware of that.
Of course, if he, if he moved the driveway without permission, then that's a whole other issue. One that we will deal with if necessary when the time gets here.
Sounds good.
The second item that was out there dealt with the buffering on Susan Sinnet's place. If I'm reading the staff notes correctly, the, the approved plan called for sixteen conifers rather than the seven that are currently there. And it's, it's the recommendation of the town planner that Ms. Sinnet, Mr. Woods and the town planner get together to resolve that particular issue.
No, again, uh, I'm gonna, uh, again, I've met with, uh, Susan before we went to the planning board, trying to be navel-y, trying to be proactive as a developer, as most developers don't, and, uh, sat with these people and asked them what, what, what they would like to see to help offset and mitigate, um, this issue. Susan and I agreed the eight plants on her property, because she didn't want them all over her yard and, and wherever. We physically went out there several times with her to, you know, to see what she wanted, ask what Susan wanted, went back and forth, and we finally agreed what to do. We then went there physically and staked off exactly where she wanted those trees and physically put those trees exactly where those stakes are. Uh, and then we, she asked us if we could clean up to the right of her property, facing her property. There's a lot of dead vegetation, and we cleaned up, took down a couple of trees for her that she asked us to take down that were dead. And she wanted us to clean up a bunch of dead wood that's been there for over twenty-five years sitting there, which we did, and cleaned that up as well. Then cleaned a swale and did everything else that she's asked us to do. And the planning board, the directive in the plan, and Ted specifically said, well, do what you can on that area and, and, and fifteen trees was not the number that we agreed to do. That's just what was drawn in that plan. And Susan, I, just, I'm referring to you on this because that.
I'm not the one who brought this up, so I don't know why you're saying it's me in touch of tone. I'm not the one who brought this up.
Okay, I'm just saying.
I was just saying to you, so I didn't bring this up. This is part of their conversation, not me. They walked and looked at it. So it's not me.
Okay, okay, great. I apologize. I apologize.
You should, because I didn't do anything.
So Susan and I, you know, did this and it went back and forth because she didn't want all those trees. And being that the corner of her lot, facing her lot on the right, it's actually fully vegetated, no trees would grow in there. Uh, it doesn't, as I mentioned earlier, because it's, it's too shaded and so on within that area. So we, Susan and I had an agreement. I met that agreement.
Su- Susan, are you happy?
No, but it's not, that, we already had, I had a discussion with Walter, too. The fact that I have to now shade and build and do everything because he across the street doesn't have any buffer that he said was to be buffer. That's why I'm more unhappy with the planning board and him and the situation of what's left across the street. I think my going into and building all of these trees, I've never had trees in front of my house. My house has been open to the street. God bless America, that's the way it was. There was only houses and there was no houses across the street. Now I have to plant all these huge pine trees and basically build a barrier around my house so I don't have to see his houses, because he doesn't have a buffer, a real one, built between Mr. John's property and mine. So I'm not happy with the fact that I already have seven huge trees that'll grow in five to seven years. For five to seven years, I have to look and have car lights coming into my house, and they do, and don't say they don't, Walter, because they do, they come from the road, not the corner.
I don't know.
Anytime anybody drives down the road, I have car lights coming into my house. I now have to live, thank you very much, with my curtains closed all the time. So I moved to Arundel twenty-two years ago to be away from that, and now I have to live in it. So am I happy? No. Would I prefer the buffer across the street so when someone's driving down the road, I don't have cars coming into my house? Yes. Is that what we thought we were gonna do when I went to the meeting at the town hall? Yes. Is that's what happened? No. Am I gonna have it maybe in five to ten years? Probably. But I don't know. I have to take care of the trees now. Because I never have. So in regard to that fifteen trees, no, I don't want fifteen trees on my, I don't want a wall of green. I wanted it across the street in the buffer like I was told when I signed agreement with you, Walter, and when I went to the town hall and you wrote it on it, and you asked me in person. And that's not what's there.
I, well, I disagree with that. I, I, I agree, I agree, Susan, that I said I would leave that buffer there. And what I've done is I've left a thirty-five foot wooded buffer, because I purchased ten feet of property alongside plus the existing twenty-five feet, and all that vegetation is there. As Mr. Redway said, because that, there's very large growth pines, it looks there, that the, there's no foliage. When the lower stuff loses its leaves during the, uh, wintertime, as it has, yes, you will see more lights coming, you know, coming by, but I have left that vegetation as, as the planning board has asked me to do so uh, in that area. And I've left as many trees on this site as I can to still make the homes presentable, that the trees aren't gonna fall on top of them. So I am, as a developer, trying to do the best I can, both for the neighbors, both for the planning board, and both for the marketability of this development, because I think the development personally looks really good and has done very tastefully good from how it's been designed. And unfortunately, you didn't buy the land, Susan, I did, and I have a right to do what I need to do on my property. I've done the best I can to satisfy all the neighbors. I spent a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars building your road.
I don't care about the road, Walter. Remember, you're talking to the wrong person about that.
I know that. You're the only.
Well, then don't bring it up every time you're talking to me, because I, it doesn't mean a darn thing to me.
Well, right now I'm talking to the planning board, letting them know what I've done, and I hope the planning board understands that I have been responsible in the development. And I'm gonna continue to be responsible, you know, as we move forward.
Well, this, this was just a note in the develop, in the, uh, planner's report that commented on the buffering at Susan's house. I'm sorry I mentioned it.
It was supposed to be eight trees. There were seven trees, and there's supposed to be a re- re- um, compensation for the eighth tree, so I can fill in with my own, because you didn't wanna come up on my lawn, because you didn't wanna ruin the lawn. So I bought little, I moved my own trees over, and I'm gonna get flowering trees or bushes in between that won't be con- because we had, we did have the discussion, Walter. So we're, we're, I'm not arguing about that. I'm arguing about the, the whole process from the beginning has not been truthful to me. And I get what you're saying. You've, you follow, that's why I asked them before about what buffer is buffer. Moving forward, it should be defined better.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying to you. I'm not saying you've done any, because you follow the rule of the, the law per se. But it's not what was told to me by yourself or this board to me when I sat in there that I wouldn't see any lights. It's not true. It's not true. I am now in a curtained, big tree gonna be blowing up thing, and that's fine. Life happens. Like you said, you built the road, thank you. Selling will have to later be better. But it's not the Arundel experience that I bought twenty-two years ago and have paid taxes in this town for.
I understand. I understand that, Susan.
And I will be at every one of these about your development, because I'm watching it, just saying, in a positive way, never in a negative way, but I am gonna be watching it.
That's fine.
Okay. Anything else, Ted?
He's muted.
No, we're all set.
Okay, good enough.
That's why I mute.
On to the next item on the agenda.
Give me your time, folks.
All right. Okay, better, Walter.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Item number two, Pinecrest Acre's preliminary subdivision application, a discussion of the sidewalk. A proposed mixed-use development consisting of an eight, age-restricted housing and twelve thousand two hundred fifty square feet of commercial use on a five acre interior parcel off of Pinecrest Acres Private Road, like, located on tax map thirty-five, lot fifteen B in the DB two district. Blue Sky Properties LLC is the owner. Jason Fafiatis, PE of Atlantic Resource Consultants, is the applicant.
Hey, guys, this is Jason.
Hey, Jason.
Can't see you.
Oh, do you want, I, I was doing you guys a favor. If you wanna see me, hold on. There you go.
There you go.
Turn it, turn it off.
Thanks.
You feel like you wanted, in that episode of Friends, where they're going, my eyes, my eyes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Ted, you want me to jump in or, or, you're waiting for Ted?
Well, we're waiting for Ted. He keeps muting himself.
That's because I, I keep coughing.
That's, and I don't think you guys wanted to hear it.
No, we don't. We don't.
That's why I kept muting myself. Um, but one, I think the purpose of this is for the, the planning board to talk about the results of the sidewalk, which I was not in attendance at. I can't participate in that portion of it.
Oh, I, I do have a couple of questions about the road.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's a commercial road coming off Limerick.
Yes.
So it's, it's gonna be the, uh, commercial, built in town standards for the commercial room, back up to the point where the, um, age-restricted housing cuts off on the right, and then the road on the left going up into the back is also going to be built to commercial standards.
That's correct.
And, and I, I think I might have mentioned it, um, at the sidewalk. It didn't look on the map as if you had a, a fifty-foot right-of-way for the road to go down through.
Yeah, so, uh, we're waiting on the final boundary survey. I think we do have fifty feet all the way down, but Rich, even if we didn't, we would build it to the commercial standard, but it could never be taken by the town. So it would just, it, it, it wouldn't have the legal right-of-way the town would accept, but it could still hold a fifty-foot, it could still hold the road.
And then the road going into the fifty-five and over development is twenty feet wide?
Yeah, it would be the, it would be the, your local road, so the one that serves less than two hundred and fifty, uh, daily trips.
Okay. I didn't, I, I, I was kinda curious, because you're moving the, you're moving the property back to the point where it, it, it looks at, almost as if part of it's gonna be where the, where those drop-offs were for the commercial side, the big, the pits that were in there? That's not gonna create a problem for you?
No, not, they won't go, they won't go quite that far back. So that, that will actually be a natural uh, differentiator to the, to the two spots.
Okay. I remember the, one of the, one of the gentlemen that was there talking about the fact that if somebody goes walking out there, they're in for a surprise.
Yeah, so when, when we, when we get in there with it, when they go in and clear it and stuff, uh, we'll find all that stuff with the logging equipment, I'm sure.
I have a couple of questions, Rich. Uh, Jason.
Sure.
Uh, well, actually, it's more for Ted first. Um, so Ted, what is exactly the definition of the DB? Ooh, we lost Ted.
Yeah.
He has, he has gone away. He'll be back.
Gone away. Rich, can, um, what is the definition of a DB two, of the DB two? what is the definition of a DB2, of the DB2 district? What's allowed and not allowed?
It's a mixed use. I'd, I don't have the ordinance with me right now in terms of what is or is not allowed in that area.
It's, it's quite a few things.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a number of different things that are allowed.
Because to me, blocking that property and I, I don't want to uh, speak off the top of my head, but just visually from looking at its surroundings. What's being proposed seems out of character for what's already there. That was my initial impression. That even though it's mixed use, it's primarily single family houses that surround it. And to do mixed use, uh, commercial as well as uh, you know, townhouses and whatever, it just seemed out of character.
And I think actually that's part of the problem because if I, it, it sits on the edge of, of the DB2 and the R1, I believe it is, uh, the goat, that runs down Limerick Road from there. That buffer running up against the property.
So the DB2, uh, district has, it's got an enormous number of permitted uses, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah.
The, the, one of, one of the big differences between DB2 and DB1 is that DB2, you can have mixed uses in it. You can have residential and commercial in, in the area. In DB1, residential is incidental to the commercial side of the property. It's an ancillary use. So if, if you had a business, you could have an apartment on the property.
But this buffer is the R1, is that right? So does that mean? Uh, I don't know. It just, uh, does that change its character in terms of how you might view its use down the road? Because it is, it straddles the, uh, the line. I'm just, it's part of what we are grappling with as a planning board in terms of trying to preserve, uh, the character of the town and at the same time, uh, you know, allow development, but keep development in line with its surroundings.
Can I pop in here just for a quick second? So something we didn't see on the sidewalk is the property next to the road. So not the houses that are on the road, but the property next door. That's actually, uh, a very large commercial building. Um, it's got a, I think it's got five or six businesses in it. Um, so I, I would politely disagree about how it, it doesn't really fit the character. I mean that I, I, Ted was telling me we're, we're kind of the first ones to utilize as part of the ordinance. And I think that's the problem is that your new ordinances are so new that maybe people haven't been using them, you know, to, to, to the, to, to the, the intent that they were created. And so, so this, that is true. This is the first project where you're kind of seeing this, this mixture of, of uses. And, and like I talked about at the previously, we're not gonna put a high volume traffic disruptive commercial use down there. It's just that it wouldn't, for the developer, it wouldn't make sense. So we're, we're really looking to get something in there that's that's low volume, low, low noise, low impact. That kind of would, would kind of be that buffer transition zone from residential to more intense commercial uses. You may see on the other pieces of the land that are closer to Route 1.
So you're talking about the, the white building as you enter? That it's right there on the corner of Limerick Road? As you come down the street that you're proposing to upgrade?
Yeah, yeah.
Like a multi-use building? Is that the solar building?
No, it's a different one. Yeah. It's, uh, uh, I think there's a daycare there. There's, there's a few other things in that. Yeah.
It's the old big E.
Yeah.
So Jason, the other question I had for you is, is the property in escrow pending approval of the, um, you know, the planning board or is it already been purchased or? Because there were real estate signs out there. I wasn't sure if it was still.
I, the, the, the purchase is not dependent on approval. Um, I believe that they were trying to close previously, but one of the owners is a merchant marine and had not set up, uh, the proper paperwork to sign, uh, to, to e-sign. So I don't, I'm, I'm not aware of it, but that, that's the only holdup there. You know, it's the, 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 their, the, the property has been purchased.
Okay, that's, that was my other question. All right. I have no more questions.
Anything from you Jamie?
Not my, I guess the biggest thought was with the road. So it'll be interesting to see how that all plays out.
Yeah. Is it?
You know, the road, actually the road and, and because it is in that transition zone, you know, the first property into the DB2 from the residential district, you know, how the developer, um, effectively buffers and, and manages that transition from the neighboring homes into, you know, a little higher density residential and, and light commercial.
I will say it did look as if it's gonna have a fair amount of distance coming back from the residential. It'll be interesting to see how that works out.
Right.
Going back on the road, when you come down on uh, coming, coming up the road initially off the road, it, it comes almost to a dead end before it cuts off to the right and continues down to the, the property. You had mentioned something about it's just gonna stop there or is it gonna go over onto that other property and make some kind of an access? Do you know?
That's a good question. So the, the, the property, the abutting DB2 property to the south of, of the subject property, uh, I believe has a 50 foot right, right of use for that road. Um, so, and I don't know what the intent of the, the owner of that property is or, but that that, that's something that we almost have to create an intersection there because if that other property is developed, they need a continuation. So we would have a stop sign and they would go straight through. You understand what I'm saying? Sorry, I don't plan.
Yeah, it just, it may be kind of, because when I, when you look on the plans, you can see it just like all of a sudden it, it doesn't slope gently. It just stops.
Yeah.
Okay. Marty, you were out there. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Now that property in itself turn around actually is split into two sections. And also there may be another owner farther down, which was possibly wanted to use commercial use. How is that being planned or thought of?
So I think that's kind of what I was just trying to describe to Rich. So the, 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 I have no idea what the plans are for the, for the other property. Um, just the five acres that, that you, that, that I have in front of you now is, you know, it'd be one or two commercial buildings. Um, because like I said, we, we shrunk that commercial back to, to meet the, the, the ordinance as Ted outlined. Um, you know, there'll be, there'll be four duplexes and a, and a couple of low use, uh, commercial buildings. And I would assume you're gonna see something similar if that other, that other property is ever developed, you know? So in, in a sense, it would probably be good if, if, uh, if they were kind of developed together, but you know, we, we don't have any, we don't have any sort of control over that. So.
Yeah, but my question is, is the road that's going to be used either way? Is that road for possible other commercial, which is not in your realm? Because you have nothing to deal with that. Is that road gonna be connected to the back properties?
It, it, it may be. Yeah, yeah. Not knowing what's gonna happen. I, I, I can't tell you that, but they have the right to use the road as it comes down, as Rich was talking about before, before you, you know, it ends. If you remember where I parked like that, you know, that, so they would be able to tie in there and use the, use the road, but they, they would probably would have to be a negotiation to use further down the property.
Ted?
Yes, sir.
Comment?
Well, I, I, I thought I had a lot of comments in the October 19th, uh, staff notes, which Jason has and are obviously gonna react to. I guess my, my first question, Jason, you said something that I was, I, I guess I was a little confused about. What, um, why can't the town take that, the Pinecrest Acres as a town road?
Well, if there's not 50 feet of right, if there, if, if for some reason that right of way next down less than 50 feet, I don't know that. I mean, they could. I, it just doesn't meet your criteria.
Okay. So the problem is that we don't have a 50 foot right of way. Is that it?
We don't know if we do or we don't. I don't have the final survey. I think we do. It's just, um, it's because it's actually wider than 50 feet up at the, up at the intersection of Limerick Road.
Right. I saw that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we want to know, when's the survey coming in?
Uh, it should be any day now.
Yeah, it was just when I looked at the plan, it just looked like, like you shot, it was, it wasn't as wide. And it appeared to be shifted more to the left so that you were with, you were within a very small distance of the property line and that, that was what had me concerned. It didn't look like it was because you, according to the map, it was, the road was 24 feet wide, but there wasn't 24 feet worth of space between the edge of the road and the property line.
Yeah. And, and don't ever get too excited on a sketch plan because that's typically we use GIS lines and so, yeah.
Yeah, that, well, that, but that was my whole question because that's what we had to go on.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have, I'm curious. Um, so there's residential and there'll be some commercial development.
Yeah. Oops. Freeze frame.
Tom froze up.
Well, we're waiting for Tom.
Association.
Go ahead, Tom.
Tom, you froze up.
Okay, am I back on?
Yeah.
Back on.
Am I back on? Okay. I don't know what happened there. Is, is it gonna be?
Okay, Roger. Ask your question.
On single association or you have two?
So, so now you both came through. Roger, what was that question again?
Are all eight units gonna be age restricted?
Yes, they have to be. Yeah.
Hey, Tom. Can, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I was curious about the association. Is, will it be a single association with both business and residential mixed together?
Um, good question. I think there's gonna be one association for the residential. And then that association will pay, uh, a, a, a say 50% of the road maintenance costs of the commercial road. So there'll be an agreement between probably two separate associations. So there'll be two, there'll be a condo association for a commercial, a, a condo association, homeowner's association for the residential, and then a road maintenance agreement between the two associations.
You've done that before?
What's that?
You done that before?
Oh yeah, it's very common. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would almost think you'd have to do that for the 55 and over.
Yes.
Nope. Well, Ted is still here. That's good. Any, any other questions from anyone? Let's see.
Yeah, you got a good one.
Yeah, Marty.
If you, uh, by the, the different associations, is that road usage to other property out back? Would they have to join that association?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I believe, uh, yeah, uh, Jens can probably tell me on this, but when, when they have a right of use, I believe, uh, they are beholden to pay a fair share of the road maintenance agreement costs. Um, even if it's not really spelled out in the, the deeds. All that property was one property at one point. I think it's, it's one of RH Brown's old pits. Um, so I'm, I'm sure that's, that's in their deed. I haven't researched it, their deeds that much, but, uh, yeah. The more users, the cheaper it is for everybody. Yeah.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, I'm William Jewett. I'm one of the abutters. Um, I just have a question. Uh, so we're gonna be, uh, dealing with, uh, two different types of septic systems here then. We're gonna be dealing with a commercial and residential. And the other question I would have is how are we getting water to all of this?
Yeah. Uh, so that, uh, they will be, uh, you know, they'll, each residential unit will have a well and then each commercial unit will probably, uh, drill their own wells. Um, and then septic, so I don't know that you can say two different types of septic. There's, there's really only one way to build a septic system. So that'll be the residential septic and then we will separate the commercial septics because they'll be, both be shared systems. So each association will have control and, uh, responsibility for their own septic system.
So, so you'd be saying that we're possibly gonna have, um, uh, eight wells of residential and two more for the commercial?
Yeah, two or one for the commercial and depending on, um, uh, because one, one well will probably serve all commercial uses. Uh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Cause that's, that's just one of our concerns as far as, uh, the water table here. Um, our wells are, uh, are fairly deep. Um, we don't have a lot of recovery. Um, my well, my personal well is 465 feet. Um, I have, uh, basically four gallons a minute at 465 feet. So I don't have a lot of, um, uh, a lot of water here. So my question is, is if Shangri-La is built out here, what do we do if we lose water?
Uh, that's, that's a good question. Um, I, I'd be curious if you, uh, if you could supply the name of the guy that drills your well to Ted. Uh, I'll give him a call. Um, uh, they usually know quite a bit about that stuff. And yeah, and it may be something that, uh, that, you know, the, the planning board may require us to do a little bit of hydro geo study uh, or analysis. Um,
Yeah. Well, he's, he's unfortunately he's passed. If you can reach him, that'll be pretty, uh, pretty miraculous. But, um, yes, I guess that's where I'm just at with this whole thing. I mean, when one of your comments a few minutes ago was you basically said this was one of RH Brown pits. Um, years ago, this was, this was never a pit. Um, he purchased the land. Um, and then split it into four subdivision, I mean four house subdivision.
Oh.
For his two, uh, he sold, uh, two of the lots, I believe to Sean Doust and Sean Doust and built two of the houses that were built in that subdivision. The original plan then was to carry the two house lots to his grandsons. Um, to eventually if they were gonna build or do what they were gonna do. Um, I was presented this plan from Bob Brown, um, before his timely, uh, untimely passing, um, in his accident. Um, a possibility of looking at purchasing these two lots, uh, for keeping my kids, uh, possibly in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
The, uh, the problem we ran into was the town ordinance with the roadway. Um, that being cost prohibitive to spend the money that they basically wanted to, um, sell the two lots for. So I mean, I, that's where I'm having a problem with this. Um, my intention is that these two properties were, I mean, that this, this lot was intentionally meant to be two house lots. And the town has a set of plans that proved it. Um, and this, this creation of what we're looking at is definitely not, um, not what I envisioned. Um, I've lived here for, uh, 30, going on 30 years. Um, and before, yeah, before that, my, my grandpa, my wife, uh, my wife's parents and grandparents owned this. So, um, yeah, all the way to the biggie at one point. So, um, I, I, I'm just a simple guy. I, I own my own business. I, um, I raise animals. Um, and I see, uh, excuse my French shit, shitstorm written all over this because literally where you have some of these houses, um, I, I, um, I'm within 50 feet. They're gonna be within 50 feet of my pig pen and, um, basically my lot line. So I, I, I can't imagine that this is gonna be beneficial to anybody. I understand the whole premise of why we did this and why this was purchased. Um, because that road cost to bring it in from Limerick Road all the way down in there to access to those two lots was so cost prohibitive. I believe that what you guys are trying to do is, is, it's a smart move, in a sense, because it's the only way you can make it work. Is to stuff as much in there as you possibly can to make this thing work, so, um, basically, that's my two cents. Um, I do have a serious problem with the water issue here, um, and I don't want to be looking down the barrel of this uh, in July, three years from now, and we have no water, and someone's looking at me going, well, because you know, we've got eight, what, ten more wells behind us now that are tapping off an aquifer, um. Uh, uh, at least three of my neighbors in my area here that I know their wells are extremely deep. So I, 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 I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, well, Will, I, I'll do a little research on the, the water, uh, as much as I can, uh, for the, you know, the zoning issues. I usually don't really address those, you know, I, I work with the rules that are in front of me and, and.
Yeah, I understand. Um, the other question that we had, you know, is when, uh, during the walk, the, the sidewalk I was, uh, at, basically when they, um, when we said, you know, I was one of the guys that basically told you, I can show you, um, the aquifer that runs out of those, that property, I've hunted this, I've lived here and, like I said, for thirty-one years. I've walked those woods back there so many times, I could take you to trees i- in my sleep, I know exactly where things are, um, but there are two, there are two aquifers that come out of that property. Um, and they literally run to the Kennybunk River. Um, I could take you there and probably the driest months of the year, and I could show you water that's moving towards that direction. And then it falls into two brooks that are budding the property or on that big commercial property that you talked about behind that. Um, which I know the owner of that property as well, um, so, I mean, as they'd say, shit runs downhill, um, this is going to be definitely running downhill into that river, and I can show you right where it goes to that river. So I am a little concerned with that as well. Two septic systems, um, if this was approved for two-house subdivision, which it originally was, which I have no issue with. Um, but I kind of do have an issue with the volume of, of septic and runoff that's going to come out of this, because this could potentially be, you know, these two commercial properties, I mean, I know of a landscaping company that requires a substantial amount of water, because he owns a, um, a hydro seeding machine. They, they fill, you know, trucks and, and he has to literally get, uh, town water to his business in the summertime, he has to pay to have that meted separately, because he can't keep up with his demand. Um, and it doesn't say in this thing anyways, that says, as a matter of fact, I think a landscaping company was one of the, uh, one of the permitted uses I, I heard about. So I, I just, I'm very concerned about that, and I want that on the record that I'm beyond concerned about it, so, um. I understand and I appreciate you guys taking the time and, and hearing me out.
Sure, thank you.
Jason, I was just looking through the, the staff notes from October nineteenth.
Yeah.
And I came across a rather interesting observation in here. Section nine, three, twelve, two B prescribes that the minimum amount of land in a cluster planned unit development shall be six acres. You don't have six acres, you only have five point two.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that I think you, uh, it may be tagging up in here, um. You gotta go, I gotta go, you gotta go back to the what's allowed in the zone for this, this use, so, um. The, the question of whether it's a P U D, uh, is, you know, what classifies as a P U D versus uh, taking advantage of the zoning allowance, um, as, as the zone allows, so, uh, Tad and I'll deal with that.
Okay. And the, the other, the other issue that I noted, um, the age restricted bonus.
Yeah.
The minimum lot size in the DB two gives fifty-six percent to the commercial coverage. And a, a minimum lot size is one point five acres. You want eight units, but at one point five acres, you only have enough for six.
Yeah, and that's right, and so, that's, that's why we're, we're rejigging the, the, the internal boundaries. Uh, the, the bu- boundaries of use to, to, uh, to amend that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the, the buffer is, is fifty feet.
Yeah, which is why we, which is another, which, all those things are sort of working in concert, uh, so then, you know, we push everything further away from the abutters. And sort of condense down, uh, with the residential. And then, which further pushes a commercial back, which needed to get smaller anyway.
Okay.
I think Marty's waving his.
Yeah, Marty.
No, somebody else wanted to talk to me and I said, no.
Oh, okay.
I can't do three things.
Well, if you could, you're better than I am, I struggle to do too.
Yes, there.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any other questions for the applicant? I can't ask Susan, she went away. Oh, there she is, she's back. Any questions for the applicant, Susan?
None.
So I, I, it just seems, Jason, you have to, to, little bit of, uh, layout to, to figure out before we can act on this.
Oh, yeah, oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, so, so, uh, I've already kind of figured it out, you just haven't seen it yet, so in the next submission, it'll, it'll look different.
Okay.
Okay.
I hope we get some, uh, early feedback on this, uh, water situation.
Yeah, that's something I, I, I'm going to look into, you know, uh, I don't mean, I don't throw this around lightly, but public water is pretty close, and so I'm going to run some, crunch some numbers and see, uh, 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 see if that makes sense.
Do you know where it, it leads up to?
It's right, it's right in the intersection of Limerick Road and Route One, and
Okay.
This property was a little bigger, it would start making even more sense, and so, that, that's, that's where the hallmark is.
Yeah.
Jay, Jason, on that intersection, the water line is across the street.
No, I, I, yeah, I know, I know, what, what, we're, Marty, in my business, we're pretty good at, at making that work, we can, we can dig test bits and bore over, yeah.
I'm just throwing that out, I'm sorry.
That's still quite a distance, with a quarter of a mile, half a mile almost.
No, I think it's more like twelve hundred feet.
No, twelve hundred? Well, that would be nice.
Yeah. It would be, and then you'll get some neighbors a little further up the road to think, oh, that's a great idea, let's get water up here.
Also, also at that, in that time, you may want to have to consider a fire hydrant.
Well, right, obviously, there would be a fire hydrant, right, if we put public water in, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah.
As a, a thought.
Any questions, Jens?
None, thank you.
Tom?
Well, Marty's, um, question brought up another question of mine, um, do we know where the nearest fire hydrant is right now?
Yeah, it's right there at Limerick and, and, uh, one eleven.
No, you mean Cistern.
Limerick and Route One, it, there's a hydrant right there.
Right on the corner.
Yeah.
Okay. Below, below Seaput Center.
Yeah, it's on the east side of the street.
So, um, by the time you, you have that distance plus going down, the Pine Crest Acres Road.
Right, the, the Pine Crest Acres Road is the, is probably as long as the water is distant on Limerick Road, so Tom, I think you're maybe thinking of the closest Cistern?
No. It's not close.
Just, no, for, for, for fire safety, the.
For fire safety, yeah, e- either or, yeah.
So probably would, the fire chief is probably going to ask us to put one in here or, or sprinkler. Given the discussion about availability of, and flow of water, um, you know, it, it it may make sense to just get a Cistern in here instead of putting, uh, sprinkler systems in, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
I've got a couple of follow-ups, uh, when, when, when there's a break with some of the well stuff.
Who is this?
This is, uh, Wayne, I got kicked off, I couldn't, and, I couldn't mute my, uh, my Zoom, so I'm on my phone right now. A resident on Pine Crest, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's quite okay, uh. Go ahead, you've, you've got Jason on, you, you've got his attention.
Okay, I just, uh, I was just following up with, uh, Billy's, you know, uh, my well, I'm, I'm right on the other side of Billy and and ours is, uh, I think five hundred and twenty-five, and I get about three gallons a minute. And that's it, and when I drilled mine, another butter, he said he immediately saw a drop in his recovery. And, uh, I can, uh, you know, so I probably only have about three hundred feet of water. And if I run two garden hoses out there to try to mow my lawn, I can suck that thing dry. And I don't, uh, I just, eight, eight more well, ten, twelve more wells, I just makes me real nervous, we're all on the same aquifer and we're all going to be sucking dirt here.
Uh, uh, let me ask you a question, Wayne, if we put public water in with that, you, would you be interested in hooking up to it?
Uh, not unless I absolutely had to, have you ever drank Kennybunk water?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I, this, this.
It, it, you know, it's, it's as good as any city water, but I, I much prefer a well, my per- my personal preference, but um, yeah, and I, and I can tell you, I mean, that twelve hundred feet you mentioned is from that hydrant to Pine Crest, but then you've probably got another, what, six, seven, eight hundred, nine hundred to get out to your so, so you're talking well over two thousand feet, I think, to get it down to where you need it to be.
No, yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, so when do, when do you think we're all going to get some, see some revised plans? With, you know, the, this, it's gonna, you're gonna have to have some frontage and continue that right of way down. Uh, with, um, you know, emergency vehicle turnaround and setbacks and all that kind of stuff off the right of way, correct?
No, because we're not creating, so it's all condos, so we're not actually creating lots, so the the, the only setbacks we have will be fire safety setbacks internally and then the exterior setbacks. Uh, which are bigger than normal, um, for, uh, for a project of this type, so, uh. But you, you, you'll, yeah, you'll get a new set of plans, probably, uh, we'd like to hit the December meeting, so probably within a couple of weeks.
So, uh, a, a condoized unit needs no frontage and, and a commercial unit needs no frontage?
Correct, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a condo zone, in a condo project, yeah. These aren't individual lots. Same thing, yeah, you can have a, you can have a continuity, uh, uh, the uses does not necessarily, um, require frontage when you're, when you're all in one law, when you're not creating new legal lots.
However, just to be clear, the, the whole development itself does have to have some setback in, in buffer.
Yes, yes, correct, Tom.
Yeah, the entire project needs to have a fifty-foot buffer all the way around.
Right, I just, I've never heard of a lot, I mean, even, uh, next door in Kennybunk, they have a backlot provision. You still need some frontage on that lot somewhere. I've never heard of anything that doesn't need any frontage.
Well, this is, th- th- these are going to have frontage, the commercial section is going to have frontage on the commercial road that goes all the way back out, there will be a small private way going up to the, the, um, uh, the age, age restricted housing community, and they will have frontage on that.
Correct, so the, the, the Pine Crest Acres is going to, well, I don't know if you've seen the old Bob Brown plan that Bill Pierce did. Um, and, and Pine Crest did extend in there, close to where they want to do the commercial now. Um, I'm not sure where, I, I, all, all I'm going by is what we were given on that sidewalk, um. But it didn't look like, it looks as though the deduction for the right of way is only the traveled way portion, not the full fifty-foot width. And there was a zero deduction for wetlands. Um, I can tell you, deducting the right of way to the best way that I have always done it. And deducting the wetland, there's not even four acres left over.
So, yeah.
For your net dens- for your net density calculations?
Yeah.
End up with like three point eight.
Yeah. So, so the right of way, we took the right of way, uh, typically when we give you the, the full preliminary submission. Uh, that will have, uh, will actually have a net resident, residential density calculation, given like a little figure in color. So it's easier to make out, uh, so we do have the, you're correct, so we do have some wetlands that we had we hadn't got in yet from the delineator until after that was submitted, so there are some wetlands on the site. So it does, uh, yeah, I haven't actually redone it for the full unit count, so, yeah, we may end up with six, uh, we, we don't know yet. So that'll, that'll be back in with a submission.
Yeah, I, I guess, Jason, my, 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 my thought process and, and I'm going, I'm trying to do this on my phone without anything in front of me here, but um, you know, you deduct the wetlands, you deduct the right of way, you end up with a net of three point eight-ish, somewhere in there is, is a rough guess. And you use the one point five acres per unit. Uh, I don't even see four units, let alone six or eight.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a, there's a bonus provision in this particular zone. Uh, if you go to the DB two zoning bulk and space requirements, there's a table. And you want to familiarize yourself with that, uh, to get to where we're going.
Uh, which, what, well, wow, I'm just going by what was spoken of earlier, the fifty-six percent. I thought, I thought it was talked about with, you know, instead of being half acres, they were going to be, uh, one and a half acres.
That, that's how we ended up with six units instead of eight, that will all, once everything is done, once we've got a, an, at us usable set of plans, we will end up having that net density calculation done over to, to actually determine the, the number of units that are available to go in there.
Correct, I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait to see the new plan, I guess, on that, before I get, you know, too, too, uh, worked up about it, but.
So Ja- Jason, just so you know. You need to get that to us by, by Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving. Whenever Town Hall closes that Wednesday, because our meeting is on the tenth of, uh, December.
Yeah.
Does the planning board have any more questions for Jason?
Not here.
Hearing none. We will move on to the next item on the list, which is not you yet, Jason, we've got you on here again.
I'll, I'll, I'll circle the airport for a bit.
There you go. Uh, item number one, Williams Auto Sales and Repair, a plenary site plan review application. Proposed auto sales and repair facility consisting of a twenty-four hundred square foot building and twenty-seven parking spaces on, on point eight acre lot containing a single family home at six sixty Alfred Road, tax map four lot thirty-nine in the Alfred Road Business District, Lester Williams is the owner applicant. And Peter, excuse me for butchering your last name, uh, is it Bagel?
Uh, Beagle, just like the dog.
Beagle, okay, of Land Design Solutions is the applicant's agent. And I think the we need to do a sidewalk and go out there and take a look at this property.
Yes.
And, and I, I've, I've had this conversation with Tad, I struggle with it because it's less than an acre. It's going to be a very crowded space.
Uh, y- y- yes, and, yes, yes, we'll be the first to, uh, to admit that.
But Tad, Tad has said, uh, it is it is doable in the zone, because, because there's an existing business on the premises, I believe, Ted? Oh, he keeps.
It's an existing residence.
An existing residence, okay, thank you.
Yes, Les, Les and his family live there and they'll continue to live there, so they're, they're, they're residents, their home is on the property.
Well, let's set something up to go out and take a look at this.
Has to be a Saturday.
Oh, yeah, there's no way we can do it any other point.
About this Saturday.
I'm open.
No, I'm not, I'm not available this Saturday.
Can do it. And I can do the twenty-second, uh, no, hold on, the twenty-first.
Oh, see, I was thinking about the fifth of December, because that'll put it right there, close to uh, when we're actually going to be having the meeting.
I can do it the fifth of December.
That's fine.
Yeah, I thought. Yeah, I thought that would be easier to do then, because we've got hunting season and I know that some of you like to go hunting. And if we do it three weeks before the meeting, we're probably gonna forget a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I guess the, the only question I would have is, um, and I don't want to be too presumptuous, but Les's lease on the shop he's using uh, ends in April, so we're, schedule wise, we're trying to get him going with whatever he needs to do as soon as possible. And I wonder if we had the site walk on the fifth and we came up with things that we needed to change, would we still be able to have a public hearing on the tenth? Or would that push us into January?
In, in, under any circumstance, it will push you into January. Because we, we, we can tell you what we've come up with at the meeting. But on the twelfth, we could, we could deem the application complete. And then move it and then schedule it for a public hearing, but that public hearing would be in January.
Okay, all right, I guess just as long as, um, a- as the applicants, we're doing whatever we need to do to go as fast as we can go. Um, that, that's, that's fine. If that's what it is, that's what it is, and we'll, we'll do our best to make sure we get everything in.
November, December is tough, because we only have one meeting a month.
Yeah, okay.
So let's, let's go for.
So Rich, to that point, should we try and do it one of these next couple of weekends, though, so that they can address any, uh, anything we may observe at the site walk?
We could, and, and, but again, we, we can, we can do that, we can address it if they, if they can give us uh, if we need to do anything and they can give us that information. I would say the, the twenty-first would be better. I can't do the fourteenth.
More than twenty-eight.
I, well, I can do the twenty-first. That's Thanksgiving weekend, so I think, I'm not sure I'll be available that Saturday, but I can do it the twenty-first.
I can make the twenty-first.
Okay, Tom, can you make it the twenty-first?
Yeah, looks like I can do it.
Yeah, that should be fun.
I'm good for this, uh, for the fourteenth, not the twenty-first.
I'm good for the fourteenth, too.
I'm, I am as well.
I can do the fourteen.
So that's four of us, Rich.
Then, then do the fourteenth. Okay.
Yeah, I think we should try to do it as, so that they can move this thing along as fast as possible. Help them out.
Could I say something, you guys?
Hang on just for a second, who said that?
That was me, Les.
Yes, Les.
Hey, how's it going, guys? Uh, I'm sorry, um, my, this is my first, uh, meeting like this, so. Any, anyway, right now, I'm, uh, with my family, we're in, uh, um, Cincinnati on our way back, because we also operate the, uh, dragway in Oxford. And I just wanted to let everybody on the planning board know that, um, we, we sold our properties in Limerick, that we are now moving, um, to a Rundle. Um, so with, with us, um, you know, we, we were trying to plan this a lot earlier, but we ran into a couple um, issues with the deeds that's getting sorted out, um, that, uh, that Tad is aware of and, and hopefully there's a few other people up to speed on it. Um, but, uh, our lease expires in April and everybody that we're trying to get lined up, including our building upon approval is nine weeks out currently. Um, so we are, I, I just wanted to extend myself, uh, concerns that we could, we could get this, um, situated. And hopefully we can get you guys all satisfied as soon as we can.
I appreciate that, we'll get, well, we'll do the site walk on the twenty-first.
I thought we said the fourteen.
Fourteenth, yeah.
The fourteen. Well, I put it on the wrong date.
But we should, we should acknowledge that, that, that you can't be a, um, even if we meet, whether we meet next week or this week. We won't be able to schedule a, a, uh, public hearing until the following meeting.
The earliest public hearing that we will have?
Would be in January.
Will be on January fourteenth.
Third, third.
No, January fourteenth. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, you're correct. It's gonna be on January twelfth, because we're swapping over to Tuesday meetings.
It's January third, Mr. Chairman.
I'm looking at a calendar for January two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, and?
It says the twelfth.
Well, I'm sure, uh, it won't, it would be the.
The third would be a Sunday, maybe the fifth.
It's on the fifth.
Isn't it, yeah, are we, are we doing first and third, right?
We're doing first and third, it's starting January.
Okay, it will be on the fifth.
My mistake.
Nope, that's quite okay. I was thinking it was Tuesdays.
It is Tuesdays.
So it'll be on the fifth.
Correct.
So what time on the fourteenth, guys? Nine o'clock?
We do it early.
Eight thirty.
Early, early. Very early.
Nine o'clock.
Eight o'clock, eight thirty.
I have to advertise this tonight.
Which one? Eight thirty works for me.
It was two eight thirty.
Eight thirty it is.
Okay. Okay.
So eight thirty on, uh, on fourteenth?
Yep, right, six sixty Alfred Road.
Yep.
Looks like it's right next to the Agway.
Yep, it's on the same side as the Agway.
Yes.
And, and there's enough room for, uh, ten cars to pull in?
Uh.
That's a, that's a busy road.
That is a busy road, that's gonna, that's, uh, yep, I, we should think about that. I wonder if we could, uh, talk to the Agway people and park in there and just, uh, walk over.
Well, I would, I would look at it thinking if he wants to have, uh, twenty-seven space parking lot. He should be able to fit the ten of us, uh, well, there won't be ten, it's only gonna be.
Well, it, it, it will be a different story if he's approved and he can build, uh, and move some things around the back. But as it sits right now, for you to have ten cars pull in and be able to turn around and head back out, I think would be a problem.
Excuse me, guys, um, I personally have no problem with you guys parking wherever you need on the property. Um, the septic tank is far from anything, and even if a few of you guys had to park a little on the lawn, I have no issues with that. That, uh, obviously up to you guys on that, but, uh, you know, however you can squeeze in there is fine with us.
Yep, he's driving.
We're driving in circles, unfortunately.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to let the board know, I will be out of town this weekend, so will not be able to participate.
We'll miss you.
I will, I will see if I can reschedule what I'm supposed to do. Which probably won't be that big a problem, I was gonna sleep late. I tried to sleep late this morning, I woke up a quarter past six, failed miserably. Okay, so the fourteenth at eight thirty on one eleven.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Are we gonna go, should, do you want me to go through the, uh, plan, so people are a little bit, um, aware of what we're proposing when you get there?
Yeah, you walk us, or I was gonna say, or as we're walking around, maybe it would be to see it in person as he's describing it.
It's up to you, I'm, I'm glad to share my screen. I have a couple, um, colored plans that if you wanted a, just a sense of what we're, uh, in overview. Um, so when you're walking around, you have some, some thoughts or some, uh, markers of things that you're interested in, I'm, I'm glad to, uh, do that.
Well, you'll, you'll have some, uh, some handouts at the meeting. You know, if you could make like, uh, some eight by ten copies of the plan, so that we, we could have something to look at and you can lead us around and show us what's going on.
Okay.
Okay.
So Chairman, you have them in your packet.
Yeah.
You're right, I do.
Yeah, you do.
Well, I have some, uh, I, I'll bring some, um, I had prepared some eleven by seventeen colored plans for tonight, and I can, uh, bring those. So they actually, they highlight the different, uh, areas a little bit better. Um, so I'll, I will bring those for, uh, for people.
Okay, that will be great, we'll look forward to seeing you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drive safely, Mr. Williams.
All right. Thanks, yeah, thank you, everyone. Um, I'm hoping, we, we're trying to plan to make sure that we're back by then, but if not, is it okay for Peter to, uh, to represent us?
Oh, yes, he's your.
Okay, all right, we, well, we're gonna definitely try to hurry back, we just ran into a couple snags along the way here, but, um, we're looking forward to, uh, meeting everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda. Cludier Mobile Home Park Subdivision Sketch Plan, a proposed development of an age restricted mobile home park consisting of twenty-five double wide mobile homes, home sites on a, on a, an acre parcel located at one twenty-six Campground Road, tax map, twenty-nine lots, two, three, and four in the Mobile Home Overlay District and the R one District. Deborah and Norman Cludier are the owner applicants and Jeff Allen P E of A E Hodgson Engineers is the applicant's agent. And I see Mr. Allen is here and I saw the, oh, there they are. You know, every time somebody moves on Zoom, everybody changes place.
Good evening.
So this is in the file label of Crossroads Community. And again, we need to do a site walk and go out and take a look at this property. And I'm.
I believe there was a, a typo in that description, it says, uh, uh, on an acre parcel, it's actually a twenty-three acre parcel, so it'll be a little bit more room than the project you looked at last.
Okay, I always want, you're gonna get twenty-five mobile homes on a one acre lot, that's gonna be really crowded.
Twenty-five stories high.
Look what Jason's doing, so, you know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick my hand out the window and I'm gonna give a cup of sugar to the guy three houses down.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, my apologies, I don't know how that typo occurred.
Well, I do, I do, we do have a map of it. Y'all know where this is located? Everybody on the planning board?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Long Cabin Road.
Yep.
No.
Campground Road.
Did we go for the site walk right after we finish at Williams?
Oh, sure, why not?
Um, I'll tell you why, uh, Mr. Chairman, you can't.
We can't?
It's the subdivision, I have to advertise the site walk.
Oh.
Wow.
I have to notify the butters. Sorry.
Yeah. No.
I know you want to spend another Saturday in the woods. I mean, another, yeah, so much fun.
Does the following Saturday work for your, uh, notification, Ted?
Yeah, I can do that.
So, following Saturday at eight thirty?
Okay.
So that would be the twenty-first at eight thirty.
Yeah, if we could push it till nine, it would make it, uh, a little easier for me. Yeah, just a little bit of a trip to make.
I don't, I don't see what, where that would be a problem. Anybody have, have an objection to doing it at nine instead of eight thirty?
Do we have the, uh, right numbers, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, who's going to make it?
I can make it.
I can make it.
I can make it.
Yeah.
So yes, there's gonna be at least four of us there.
Okay. Okay. Nine o'clock, twenty-first, that'll give me time to advertise.
So, good.
Ted, are the computers working at town?
Computers are, phones still are glitchy.
I saw that on Facebook today.
Yeah. You can't, you can't go, if you don't know the, uh, if you don't know your extension, you go to Venus. And sometimes they, they, they just lock up and you can't. The problem is, we, Spectrum's giving us a different phone system and now we have to get new phones, which we just bought new phones. But the people we bought them from, now I have to, well, uh, will give us the credit and, and, uh, and get us the phones that work with the new Spectrum system. I don't understand it, and that's okay. Um, I have no interest, I can't figure out what Spectrum's doing at all anyways, so.
Neither can anybody else, which is, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, as Yan says, that they, they, they compete for, with, uh, Bank of America to see who can be worse. Whoops, I said.
I think that's a slam on Bank of America, personally.
And deservedly so.
Deservedly.
If you've ever dealt with them or had an account with them, ever lived in San Francisco area, foolish.
Okay, so we, we will look forward to seeing you in, uh, nine days.
Right, that sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
And next on the agenda. Jason, you're back up.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Anything on the wood cutting?
Yep, we're gonna address that.
No, with this project.
We'll, we'll address that when we get out there.
Thank you.
A Rundle's Keep Preliminary Subdivision Application, a proposed clustered subdivision containing nine lots serviced in part by a five hundred and fifty foot road called First Lightway located on a fifty-eight point zero three acre parcel, tax map nineteen lot eight located at one fifty Irving Road in the Rural Conservation District and Resource Protection District. A Rundle's Keep LLC is the owner applicant and Jason Vithiades, P E of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the applicant's agent. Yep, there he is.
This is Vithiades.
That one out.
I've resurfaced.
Yes, you did.
So, in a, you know, it's getting late, so I'll give you the quick overview. You've seen this, uh, a couple of times before. Uh, actually, I don't know how long some of you have been on the planning board, but you may remember it from two thousand and five. Um, the, we did a sketch plan and then a site walk, I think, uh, this past winter. Uh, at that site walk, we discussed kicking the road entrance over probably about forty feet, so that I was, I was bisecting a property line, because there were two people that had built houses and we didn't want to put the road right out and shine the lights into their window. Um, I think we've all heard that greatest hit song before, um, so we did that, that's really been the only change. And then COVID, uh, and a bunch of delays, uh, with a number of things, but, so now we're back and then business. Um, and, uh, we got a lot of the natural resource setbacks, issues taken care of on this submission. Um, and, and Tad, if I could just get your attention here for a moment, uh, can you get Woodard and Curran to get reviewing on that, because I think that's gonna be the big lead item, knowing how all the engineering companies are overloaded?
Which, which item?
This one right here. You need a peer review on it, correct?
Yeah, we also need a complete application.
Yeah, well, well, I'll get you, so, yeah, we're working on the items that, that weren't there. We got the homeowners docs and all those things coming in. Um, and, uh, I do, I, I don't know why it wasn't in the plan set. We, we have a standard fire truck, uh, pull off, turn around and um, I just gotta make sure, it's the one we put in everywhere in a Rundle, so I'm sure that they're fine with it, um, but.
Where was it? Because I didn't find, I couldn't find it on the plan.
No, it's not, it's, 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 uh, so we didn't draw it in the, the plan set, it's a standard detail, it's the, it's the, it's the NFPA pull off. Uh, you know, with all the accoutrements. So I'll, I'll get that already on the next submission, but I didn't know if Marty had asked me, uh, the, at a different sidewalk, if we were gonna walk this again, cause I moved the road entrance, or maybe it was Rich. Uh, I was asking if, yeah. And, uh, so I, I was just throwing that out there to remind you guys.
Right. But I had, I had asked, I, I had said that we needed to do, to do the sidewalk because things had changed around. The lots had changed and other stuff. And you said that they had not.
No. So the, the lots are basically, uh, no, the lot lines did move a little bit. Yeah. Because, uh, we had that, we, we were pushing the frontages a little too short on the cul-de-sac. So, but the, the general, the, the, as you'll see it from the sky when constructed, it wouldn't look any different from the last plan to this plan. But that's, you know, I, I think there's time for a sidewalk, especially if you're doing them, you know, uh, in 10 days. Um, and then I'll have the, uh, I'll have the missing material, uh, completed and submitted to Ted by then.
Okay.
Well, okay.
Well, what's Ted? Yeah.
I mean, I, if I don't have it, I can't put you on the agenda because I need this stuff.
Yeah.
And, and there's some big issues here, you know, that we gotta deal with. And that's, I guess that's the point. Um, you know, we have, we have the, the perimeter buffer issue. We have the shoreline, thanks for doing the shoreline zone. That was, that was key.
Well, yeah. So the perimeter buffer issue. I was kinda waiting to see what you guys were doing with, with Oak Ridge, because if we're, if we're gonna go with, if you tell me you want street trees, that's what we'll do. So, but.
Well, I think that the, the, the bigger issue there was, you know, the perimeter buffer is that 50 foot no cut zone along the, the road.
Yeah.
And, and the issue is that the boards has real problems with ma, and with that buffer being on private property or being on individual lots. And it's always been in the past, I think Jens can speak to this, cause she, he did this. That buffer was on the outside of the property. It was not, it was part of the open space. It was never part of a, uh, part of the lots.
Yeah.
And we're running into a bit of a problem with, with, with the lots being, uh, actually cut or, or thinned or not, not maintained.
Well, ask and you shall receive. I mean, that's a real easy fix, Ted. We just, we'll just, we'll wrap this open space around it.
Okay. Just worried about the lots getting smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah.
And does the board have any comments to my comments? I mean, we, we gotta let Jason know where we're going here.
There, there's a ton of comments in here.
Right.
There, there's all of the things that were marked in red on the application.
Yeah, that's, those are the missing things from the application. Yeah.
Right. Those are the checklist items. Yeah.
Okay.
They were, they're really, so you go through the comments that you probably don't know this, but they're really kinda easy stuff on my end. I mean, not easy as in unimportant, but just easy as in, you know, we wrap the open space around things like that. So it's, it's, it's.
Oh, yeah. No, it's, I, I can understand that. Yeah. It just, I looked at it and I went, oh my goodness, look at all the red.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry that, I thought I'd just make it easier, but.
Oh, no.
Really dramatic.
That's, that's not a problem.
If you could put that checklist on your website, it would be great.
I know. Well, you see, it's not on the website. I had to take this, I had to take this from the, uh, uh, we're gonna use this as a template from now on, because there's no checklist for the preliminary. There's a checklist for the final. We have a checklist for everything else, but this isn't, this is a narrative in the ordinance, which is the regulations, which is a pain in the butt.
It is. So, so, yeah. So I, I take a little, uh, a little kind hearted offense, uh, you know, the number of items, you know, that, that, that I, I'm now using that checklist on my next ones coming in a rundle, cause it, it was, it was a lot more helpful in that goddamn narrative.
I didn't write it, so I'm not gonna take.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Have, have you addressed the lot configuration? For, for some of these lots, they look like they're incredibly small.
Yeah. No, well, so I, I, I may have to, I may have to get creative on just one, I think, if we wanna put the buffer in open space, but you know, you can go down, you can go down to 20,000 square feet. So.
And what about, uh?
Well, that's what the set, but one thing I wanna, I wanna make clear, and I'm not trying to bust you on this, Jason, but the planning board, planning board can put in, uh, you know, the, the, we don't have a, a maximum or a minimum lot size outside from the set system.
Right.
Um, that's, that the state does, but from a, from a planning standpoint of, of lots. You know, you let cluster lots and be whatever dimension you wanna be. Many towns just say you only can go half. We don't do that. But what we do is we base it on whether or not the lot size is suitable for a good project, for a good development. And that's really something that you guys are gonna have to look at. I have some issues with that. Jason knows that. I have some issues that I think it's overcrowded. Um, you couldn't get nine lots in there, uh, with a conventional subdivision. You couldn't, unless you, well, you could do your sub. No, I don't think you could. I tried it. I tried a little, little design on that. You don't have to give the density bonuses every single time. Um, these, if you, you've gotta make sure the lots fit the land and they're suitable properties. If they're too small, then they should be enlarged. If they're too large, they should be reduced.
Well, I mean, that's the issue really.
I think if we're, we're talking the, the first lot on the right coming in, I mean, that, that's a, that is, I'm much more comfortable with that lot than some of the other lots that I do in cluster subdivision visions in other towns. So we may just have a difference, professional difference of opinion, but I mean, I can give you, I can give you a lot development plan that's pretty solid on that lot. And whether, if that's the route we wanna go, I'll, I'll issue, you know, I'll, I'll supply you with that, with, but.
Well, what's the board want?
Conversation, me and you sit down and then, you know, and, and hash that out.
Well, we also wanna make sure, Jason, that we're hashing out with the board behind.
Right.
Either one of us or both of us or one of us. Uh, you know, I don't wanna, you and I could sit down and hash things out, but I wanna make sure I know where the board's going. I think you do too. You don't wanna waste your client's time. I don't wanna waste your time. I don't wanna waste my time. You know, if I'm, if I'm barking up the wrong tree, I wanna be told now or told as soon as possible. Let's put it that way.
Well, I think, I think this is one of the, we need to do the sidewalk so that we can look at it and say, how do we feel about this? Is, is this acceptable or should it be, should it be expanded out a little bit or should it be contracted?
Do you want me to, uh, on, on the lots in question, do you want me to actually get real specific with the layout?
If you could, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I can.
That'll give a show and tell.
Yeah. I mean, I can do, I mean, we could almost do it as if we were going to construction, you know, I, I can give you the corners of the, of a, of a, of a comparable to the neighborhood sized foundation, all that stuff, driveway. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you'll love this, Jason. The next time, the next, when we do this one, I'm gonna ask for CDs.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, it should be fine. Well, you know, you stamp them all with not for construction and we just constructed a subdivision without, on drawings that said not for construction. So I think the next time we'll go for some CDs.
That's, yeah, that's, uh, you know, all you gotta do is tell me that stuff, you know, I, my client's not gonna volunteer me to do the work. So.
No, he isn't. But, but I'm sure you won't mind doing it.
No.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, to be honest with you Ted, our permitting drawings are usually 99% CDs anyway. So.
I know they are. I know they're, I just wanna see that off there.
Yeah.
Cause I got challenged on it the other day and I went, yeah, you're right.
So do we need to schedule a sidewalk?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
One of the Saturdays we already have, just do it afterwards.
21st, the 21st?
Sure.
Yeah, I can do that.
So you're, you're doing the other one at nine. Do you wanna say like 10:15 or so? I mean, or I'll be there whenever you need me to, but maybe I'll be, I'll be there at like 9:30. So you just can show up after.
That'd be good.
Gonna advertise it though.
Well, you think it'll take an hour at the, uh, campground?
I don't.
Ground Road?
I don't know. I mean, it's clear cut. So first thing you'll see it's clear cut.
I guess my thought is if.
Walk down a fairly, you're gonna walk down a fairly, um, gradually sloping, uh, slope down to, uh, where it starts dropping off to the wetlands.
Like to Jason's point, if we give ourselves an hour there and, and, you know, plan for 10 or 15 minutes to drive over at 10:15.
Yeah. 10:15 works for me.
That's fine.
Okay. We get 10:15?
Yep. Yep. And I will notify the butters. Tomorrow. Get some workings tomorrow.
So I just wanna throw out there, Jason, that issue of actually open space.
Yeah.
I think that, that'll be important for me. I don't know how the rest of the, of the board, but they have all that open space, but they won't be able to access it. So it seems, uh, to be the point.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I actually think it's a good idea, you know, uh, uh, put the buffer in the open space and then, uh, then, you know, people go find their property pin. They know they're not cutting trees that, that are outside of it. So.
Okay.
Have you, uh, heard back from the fire chief yet?
No. I haven't heard back from the fire chief in any of the three. I think he's sick right now.
Well, well, we've heard from, uh, yeah.
You heard from Reynolds, didn't you?
No, I actually, so I, I had a conversation with, with him about this project a long time ago. And so, uh, I, I didn't think he had any issues then, but I, it really, it probably shouldn't be my responsibility. And again, Autumn, not yours Ted. So I'll, I'll try to stop and see if I can corner him.
I'm not sure he's in. That's the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, he may, he may not.
He got injured. So, uh, I don't, I don't think he's in. Um, but I did contact Reynolds. So yeah, you wanna stop and see Reynolds? That's, that's fun.
My, my other question was concerning the email from Roger Teshiro.
Yeah. Do it. So I think Roger has the same concern I do is that the quicker we can get this for, I think Roger's comment was, he doesn't want me peer reviewing my own plans.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Yeah. So, so, you know, we'll build the road to town standards, uh, and, but it, it needs to be reviewed, you know, obviously by another engineer and, and, and that's typically a long lead item, you know, cause I can't revise plans of, I, I kinda wanna get all these reviews done concurrently so that I, I, you know, I'm not redoing everything six times for, for things that pop up.
Yeah. I, I, I agree, but at the same time, if there's gonna be any dramatic changes, I don't wanna get them started if there's gonna be a change and they have to do it again. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't wanna get repetitious there and churn.
Yeah.
So I think, I think I wouldn't, I wouldn't start pulling the trigger on this until I, I got the stuff from you and after the, after the, uh, public sidewalk.
Well, right. So, yeah. So I think at the sidewalk, if, if, if you guys can be so kind enough to tell me if what I'm showing you works on the tight lots, then, then I think that, that, that's probably the critical path.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll take a look at it and find out.
Alrighty.
Thank you much.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Land Use Ordinance Amendments.
Yeah.
Uh, Discussion with Action, Land Use Addition of Land Use Ordinance 8615 and 8635, the Special Exception Criteria for the Resource Protection and the Stream Protection Districts. Did you get those all worked up Ted?
Uh, no.
Oh.
Uh, in case you hadn't noticed, you saw all the stuff that we were doing and the back and forth I've been doing with people all week. Um, I didn't get all the stuff until today, you know, and some of the stuff. But what I, what I do wanna talk about is, yeah, we've already completed two of these.
We have.
Yeah. The, and the third one is the one that we were having problems with. And I'm, I'm at the stage, and that, that third one is Resource Protection District. And I think I heard from another number of people at that point where this Resource Protection District was getting into some things that were really based on, on putting together, um, a, uh, some sort of perform, allowing certain uses as, as a conditional use in the Resource Protection District instead of creating all these, um, extraordinary, uh, things that, uh, people would have to do, like boardwalks and accessory structures and, uh, and, and, uh, the single family dwelling thing, that's standard. We already have that in the ordinance. So I'm not even sure why that's there. I put it in there just to be safe. Um, but I think the, the issue is that we really wanted that we were, we were focused on putting in walking trails and making some of these resources that, that aren't as sensitive, or even if they are sensitive, accessible to the public. To, to, no different than, let's say that, that the Heath over at Saco has a boardwalk on it. Technically, you could say, well, that's not a good, that, that's an intrusion upon that particular kind of use, but it gives access to an important natural resource that people don't see very often. Cause we don't have any real good bogs in this, in, in Southern Maine. They're all Northern Maine and, and Down East. And, and that's what I was concentrating, realizing also that we have ACT. You know, ACT is gonna wanna develop their, their property to a certain degree. And so we were providing exemptions for, for educational purposes. And I'm wondering if that's something we should put as, as a permitted use, because at this point, I'm not sure what you want to really be an exemption to be in the Resource Protection District. Uh, unless it's, it's strictly, unless it's strictly only in that 250 foot setback. And remember the 250 foot setback is, yeah, that's for water quality. It's also a wildlife, uh, quarter, especially around heavy water environments like Brimstone Pond. You need that for, let's say terrestrial animals to be able to, to circulate. But I'm just wondering if all these things that, that, that I had last time really shouldn't be in, in, uh, in the, uh, in the permitted use instead of a special exception. Or not permitted use, conditional use of this zone.
Well, I would rather see them as a conditional use than a special exception. I just assume not have a special exception.
Yeah. Well, that would mean we would delete special exception from the Resource Protection District.
Yeah. Okay.
How's the board feel about that?
I go along with that.
I'm fine with that as well.
Agreed.
Jamie, how you feel?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that? Okay. Well, then that takes care of that. Then we're all set to go. I'll just, I'll take, I'll put these in the, uh, I'll put these as uses in a per, conditional uses and it will strike special exceptions. And now we're ready to go.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's safer. Frankly, I think that's a safer, safer, uh, uh, stretch to go. And.
Okay. Do we need?
The state was getting real nervous about special exceptions and Resource Protection Districts anyways.
That takes care of that.
We don't need to take a vote on that, do we?
No, I think you just.
The next item, Discussion with Amendment, uh, with action, Amendments to Timber Harvesting Less Than 40% Basil Area.
And that was just the clarification. I mean, we, we can take a very hard look at all of the, uh, timber harvesting issue. But I think the first thing was to make it very clear that we had a problem in that we, there was no way to track what 40% is occurring in various, various districts. And, uh, so the problem was that Jim Nagel doesn't take a, a permit uh, for, um, it's a development, land development permit. Just like he does for demolition, which is permitted and all these other things that are permissioned. It's just that you would register by doing this permit and you give him, uh, and a, a very simple map of where the 40% will be cut. And that way we have that record of, of when it was cut for 10 years in the area that was supposed to be cut. And if there's a dispute, we can, you know, there's a way to dispute it, but it's, it'd be a simple permit process. We would never go to the plan anymore, be in the CEO's hands, just like it is now. But the problem is people dispute whether or not, if it's a permitted use, do I, why do I need a permit? Well, it's like a single family home is a permitted use. Why do you need a permit for that? Well, for the very simple reason that, you know, that we're just checking. It's, it's an ability to check that you're in conformance. We don't have that right now.
We've had a number of instances lately where there, there has been way more than 40% that was clear cut.
Right. Let's make sure that we have a clear idea of where these cuts are occurring. If we have question, if Jim has a question about whether it's 40%, you can nip it in the bud before we're, we're looking down the barrel of, of violations. And that's.
Are you, are you suggesting, uh, well, it says option one, option two. I think option two, personally, I think option two would be the one to go with.
Okay.
Cause if it's more than 40%, then they have to come in front of the plan.
Correct.
And if it's less than 40%, they can get a permit just so that we can track it.
Right. And the only reason I was saying, uh, referenced, uh, 9342A was because that's what's existing right now.
Okay.
Those are the standards. Those are the standards. So it's not just that he gets a permit. Those are the standards you have to meet.
I, I would be fine with it because it does, it, it at least allows us to have some kind. allows us to have some kind of an idea of what's going on. Because if you come and you get a permit, i- if you come and you clear cut forty percent of your land now and you wait nine years and you clear cut another forty percent of your land, nobody's going to know it.
Right. Now we know it.
Yeah.
Now, I think this is the first, the first shot. We were talking about doing, you know, getting a little more extensive, but right now, this is a good start. And then we can go into it deeper.
So can I ask a question on on the more than forty percent? Will it just rely on the instance, uh, forester for whatever they present, we, we won't be judging it. They just, that true that was
No, you judge it. You can judge it. Sure. Why couldn't you judge it?
Well, because I, I don't know.
What you did with Cannon, when you did Cannon, that was the sixty percent cut. You you did Cannon. You reviewed all the stuff for for them.
Okay.
So you you've done it once before.
Do we have any uh, any criteria for for judging?
Well, I, I think you kind of nailed it with the criteria. We're going to get a report from a certified forester that's going to tell us what's being taken.
Right. And that's, that's what, that's what happened the last time when Ken was doing sixty percent. We got the report from both a a forester and the state forester. And we went and uh, made sure that there there's a whole bunch of standards that go along with that, you know, how big the cuts are, how how open the spaces are. That's all in the the over forty percent stuff. Um, the only other thing was we deleted the notification of DEP uh, for granting of of exceptions within the shoreline zone. And and that's because the state basically is responsible for that now. Gave that responsibility over in the shorelands district to the state.
Yeah.
If you recall. Did that back in two thousand seventeen? I think. Hey, that's done. And so that's why I recommended deleting that because they already know about it because that's who gave the permit. Not us.
Well.
So uh, I may have missed part of it in a, in a previous conversation, but where would the low level threshold be for somebody to not have to get a permit?
Hmm. Right now, Jim does it where if you, if it's associated with another permit, um, like a building permit or a street or a road construction permit. Um, you uh, you don't, you don't uh, you don't have to have a timber harvesting, you know, i- i- it's, it's really kind of questionable. Because, you know, I think I brought this up last time. If you have a woodlot that you're taking out X number of trees per year, um, you're certainly not doing a forty percent basal cut, but you're do, you're taking out, you know, some trees to do five quarter, like I did personally, five quarter. You know, every year. Um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that I I don't think really should be in the timber harvesting or you're, you're going in and clearing some trees to to put a garden. I I I don't think that's, that's something that's timber harvesting. Timber harvesting is taking it out to harvest it for timber. It's not to convert it to another land use. Now, there's certain land uses, like I I think we've run into the situation where people want to create farmland, where they want to create a field. Well, of course, they're going to clear cut to do that. And that's something that that uh, we don't have a real good mechanism on that. And that should be provided. There should be a mechanism that somebody wants to do it for, let's say, restoring farmland. I've, I've had that, that question come up, or grazing area.
Yep.
Why shouldn't they do that? You know? So they're converting that use from one to another, converting it from forestry or or, you know, timber harvesting for that purpose, wood management, forest management to agriculture or to recreation or something like that.
So does, does the, does the statutory definition of timber harvesting address those type of caveats?
It it addresses that you're going, here, let me read it for you.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but.
No, it's okay. I don't either. I have to look it up.
I guess my concern, you know, is, is somebody goes out and and like you say, they have a woodlot, they want to cut a few trees, but it happens to be alongside somebody else's property and
Right.
you know, then they start to go and gripe and, you know, complain to you, complain to Jim, and all of a sudden you're in a little bit of a pissing contest just because you wanted to cut a handful of trees down for some firewood.
Yeah, and I, and and that's, that's, that's my problem too, for the same reason, you know. Haven't been a woodlot owner myself. Here's what it says, and and this is what, this is where it could probably use, the definition could use a little more bolstering. Says the cutting and removing of trees from the growing site and the attendant operation of cutting and skidding machinery, but not the construction or creation of roads. Timber harvesting does, does not include the clearing of land for approved construction or for the conversion of forest to some other land cover.
What are you reading from the Ted?
Definition, page twenty-six in section three, two. That was
I thought, I thought you were reading the uh, s- state statutory definition.
That could be the state statutory definition. I don't know. I just know that this was written in two thousand seven. Approved in June, well, it was approved in June thirteenth, two thousand seven. So
We have
been here, I I have no idea what the circumstances were for it.
The uh, the state different definitions a little bit different.
Is it?
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah. Probably not surprising that the ordinances would be different.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. What is it said? Do you have it?
I do.
I'd have to shut down, I'd have to leave you guys, and I don't know if I could come back if I go look it up.
Timber harvesting means the cutting or removal of timber for the primary purpose of selling or process processing forest products.
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, that, 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 now that gets me a little nervous. I'm doing for the processing of forest products. I'm doing for firewood.
That sounds sort of like what we were doing with with uh, farm activities.
Exactly.
Yeah. Uh, it goes on and defines also timber harvesting activities. Uh, so. But.
Is there any illumination in the timber harvesting activities or is it, is that?
No, it's a little bit more expansive. Uh, timber harvesting activities means timber harvesting. Uh, the construction and maintenance of roads used primarily for timber harvesting. The mining of gravel used for the construction and maintenance of roads used primarily, primarily for timber harvesting and other activities conducted to facilitate timber harvesting. So it's kind of that number of uh, you know, related infrastructure activities.
Yeah. For timber Well, I mean, it's like, it's like blueberry farming, but they have the same exact, almost the same language on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Kind of like um, yeah, see, you know, there's, there's all these, it it's not very clear in ours. Not as clear as, well, theirs is, is actually is, makes me a little nervous because wood products could be anything.
I thought ours was clearer than the state's.
I I like it better because it's, it 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 was, it it confines it more. It prevents it from being misinterpreted more. It's attendant operation of cutting and skidding machinery. Okay, fine, then you're telling what it is.
Honestly, I think but the whole purpose of doing this is so that we have a record of people who are clearing their property so that they don't end up doing more than the forty percent, which is without coming to us for for a permit. I I'm not completely convinced that we need to get overly
I don't
Can I ask a question?
It works out.
Yeah, I like the, I like the uh, um, the, the, the part where it says the clearing of land for approved construction or conversion of forest to some of the land cover. That's how we get away with cutting for uh, clearing of land for um,
pasture.
For, for farming. And I've had that happen a couple of times. Pastures.
I, you know, i- if we, if we say if you, if you want to do any clear cutting on your land, you have to go to the codes enforcement officer and he will give you a permit. And he will tell you whether or not that permit is needed. If you go in there and say, I want to clear cut the back forty because I'm going to put a bunch of cows out there, he's going to go, okay, go right ahead. That's allowed.
Right.
And he's not going to bust your chops about it. But if you tell him you want to clear cut the back forty because you want to harvest the wood, he's going to make you get a permit for it.
Yeah, well, i- if you want to clear cut the land, you you get a forester to do it, you just have to go to the planning board and the, and the uh, and the forester will make the pitch to the planning board why you know, that it meets those state standards.
I got you, Linda.
No. All right, I quite, a couple of questions, actually. Um, so the whole thing with tim- timber harvesting, I mean, if you're going to be timber harvesting, um, that is something that um, you're, you know, you have a timber harvester come in. Um, you're filling out paperwork. Those timber harvesters are, you know, reporting everything that's done. Um, that's something that's already being done. I'm confused as to why you want to get involved in that. Um, not only that, I mean, if for you to determine, I mean, you just, we're talking about, nobody knows, like, what's forty percent? What's, I mean, you're not foresters. I mean, we're putting that onus on, you know, Jim Nagel. I mean, are you hiring a forester to come out and review the property before? Are you hiring the for- forester to come out after? I mean, you're opening up a huge can of worms. Um, and I'm really not really sure why, because when I watched the meeting last week, you were going to find out if this is what the townspeople wanted. You were going to find out if there was actually a problem. Did Jim Nagel give you a letter stating that he had some problems or concerns? Did you have?
Doing this to me?
Um, no, the board.
Okay.
I just know that last week there, during the meeting, there was going to be some talk about whether this was going to be brought up. So uh, you asked the townspeople, I mean.
I think that was it. I, Jim has asked that we have some sort of system because right now, nobody's coming in getting the forty percent permit from it. And so then they go and clear cut, and there's no, that we have
So is and, and what are they clear cutting for? Are they clearing a lot? Are they making a pasture? Are they doing what? I mean, is there, I mean, if they're, if they're doing something that, you know, that that's against the rules, then why not direct that instead of the people that, you know, why, why are you changing?
Because they're
I don't think we're of, go ahead.
Linda, there's a logger out there telling people that they don't need to come to the town to get a permit. They want to clear cut their land, they can do it.
They can clear cut their land, they can do it.
That's right. That's what the logger is telling them because he wants the business. Or at least that's what I'm thinking.
Any, any logger that wants to clear cut land isn't very, a very good logger, because
I won't argue that.
That, okay, they're, 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 I mean, it, a lot, most loggers are like fishermen, they're conservationists.
Yeah.
They don't go out and they don't cut everything down at once, so they have nothing to cut later. That doesn't make any sense. So
We've heard it more than, more than a few people talk about this particular person. And I, I would, I would just like to, the only reason that I want to see this is so that we don't drive down the road and see where somebody has clear cut a thousand feet along the road. You know? Couple of acres deep and he just cleared the whole thing out. He should have come to the town to get a permit. Did he? No. Oh.
Was it against?
What he, what he did was, was against the land use ordinance.
Okay.
Because, because
That needs to be addressed, not changed. I mean, I, I
Well, yeah, but the, again, the issue becomes how do you know?
You cut out.
Yeah.
Hold on, everybody froze.
Well, but
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Richard. You froze up.
I'm sorry. The, the issue becomes, how do you know uh, whether or not they've gotten to the forty percent or they're under the forty percent? If they come to you and they say, we're going to be doing some work, then you're going to have an idea as to how much work was done because the ordinance says you can't do it uh, for more over, it has to be over a ten year period of time before you can, can do that. So if you
If you cut the forty percent.
If you cut the forty percent.
If you cut the forty percent.
But you can cut the forty percent, you can't cut any more for ten years unless you go to a forester and and have him give you
Right, but who's going to determine that forty percent? Who knows? Who, 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 who's qualified in the town hall to do that?
It, that, that could be a problem. We just want to know
It's a serious problem.
We just want to know if people are cutting the land.
You just click on that link. You don't have to type it all in. If you just click it out with your mouse, it, it, it should do it.
I thought I heard Ted.
If I had to guess, he's guiding Marty back
I think someone's trying to get on the meeting and he's not having
Marty, probably.
Probably Marty.
Oh, we lost Marty?
Yes. Some time ago.
Well, that, that was the whole idea is just, you know, we have no way to track it right now, so we don't know.
You know, it's
I just would be careful about what you implement without, you know, it's, you know, as it, as is Jim, you know, Jim Nagel's not gonna I mean, you would have to, to implement, and I don't know what you're, what you're thinking of doing because I didn't see any of the documents, which is another subject I'm going to bring up in a minute. About, you know, about, we, we talked about this, there's no reason why this stuff isn't posted. There's no reason, you said, there's option A, option B. Obviously, you guys got something in front of you. Nobody else sees it. Nobody else knows. You know, it's, put it online. Put a link so everybody else can see what's going on. Um.
Well, Jim Nag, Jim Nagel is the one who brought this to my attention. And he asked us if if something could be, could be done about it. In terms of it getting online, I have
I, I know, I gotta wait. I I shouldn't have mentioned it without Ted being in the room, but anyway.
That's okay. I have no idea how anything gets online. I'm not sure Ted does.
He, he did it for a couple of, a couple of meetings and then it stopped. He had a link on the agenda that you could click on the agenda and see what was all, all the detail. He did it like twice and then he could
I would talk to Ann because she's, she's now in charge of running that, that whole area.
And she would Well, you know, you know, you know, last week you brought, I mean, last week, last meeting, you brought up a point about you know, going through this whole thing with the animal husbandry and and then getting shot down at the end.
Yep.
I, I, I'm guilty. I was one of those people that shot it down. Um, but in my defense, getting the information so I can follow along is not easy. You know, it's sort of, you know, this stuff as, as you're doing it should be posted. Um, and and there's got to be more to get more people involved earlier.
Linda, and I understand, and I wasn't even upset with you for having done it. I was upset with a particular person who has
I get it. I came in at the last moment. And I, and I get that, but the, the point is, I can't, I, I mean, I, I heard that there was changes to the last land use ordinance. I got on, I started reading about it. The thing about it, if the stuff was readily available to the citizens so that they can see it, so it's available to them, you know what I mean? I mean, the, the YouTube page has forty-three subscribers. I mean, when, you know, you, you're, you're sending out agendas for the next meeting, put the link to the YouTube meeting from the month, week before, you know, the last meeting so people can see it, you know what I mean? There's ways that to get more people involved instead of worrying about it when you go to town meeting. Who's going to be involved and who's going to know? That's my point.
Okay. Point taken.
Ted, did you hear that, Ted?
No. I did. I've been talking to Marty this whole time. Marty gave up. I've tried to get him on there three times and I can't. I don't know why I can't get the link, but he can't get the link. So he's gone.
Can't get the link because one, once he used the link, it expires. He needs a new one.
I know.
Okay, so I get my point when you were on.
Which is really strange. You can send him the same link again and he'll be able to use it to get in. Don't have to create a new one.
I think he's given up. Anyways, Linda, what did you say?
Um, so there, was there something preliminary written as far as the timber harvesting or or, and there was.
Yes, it's up
So I know we had talked about this before about putting the link on the agenda so other people have the ability to see what's ability to see what's, I mean, I, I, I wish I, right now, talking about this, I would love to be able to see what you guys, what you're, what you're talking about.
Well, it's on the website.
Where?
Under land use, uh, it's on the planning board. It says planning board agenda items.
Aja- yeah.
Yeah.
Your agenda items? I got the agenda.
No, the agenda items. It's too big. Wha- what we have, it's on the, it's on the website itself, just like.
Yeah, but the link, I, I, you can't. I went to the land use ordinance today and I clicked on the land use ordinance and the page four oh four not found. I, I'm just saying, things are very difficult to find on that website. And I think for like two ti- two meetings, you put a link on the agenda that took you directly to the documents and then it stopped. It did. Be just kind of really nice to have access to the information, so that people can be involved through the process, not at the end of the process, when you try, trying to go to town meeting.
Okay, well, so noted, but always remember, there is that standing section on the website under planning board, where it has all of the agenda items.
I'm just.
Hundreds.
Comment was made at the last meeting that people don't get involved and aren't pay, you know, and then you do all this work and then you wonder why it gets shot down at town meeting. I'm just trying to express how to maybe avoid that.
Yep.
That's all.
Equus mortis.
Yep. Okay, got it.
Because especially with this whole thing with, I mean, you got so many, so many things going on when you say timber harvesting, it's not necessarily timber harvesting, you know what I mean? Clearcutting, timber harvesting, forestry management, they're all different things. They're all different things and. And it's going to be.
What you might want to do is go read what we, what, what's in there, because it's just a small change in there right now. Something that actually Jim Nagel asked. And that was just basically that you come and get a permit from him. Which is.
Did he say he wanted to, did he say he wanted to get a permit, but did he say he wanted to go out there and determine what was forty percent? What, determine?
No, he wanted to have a record of who came in and what, and when they had cut. That's what he wants.
I mean, or, you know, because most people will go in. I, well, I shouldn't say that. I take that back.
Well, he, he has a, he has that permit. It's called land development permit. Doesn't cost, I don't think it costs ten bucks, not even that.
Ted, uh, yes. I, I understand Linda's point about whether Jim is the right, uh, determiner of whether something's forty percent or thirty percent or sixty percent or whatever. Why not, why wouldn't we just allow permitted timber harvesting with the, uh, condition of a, uh, an assessment by a forester, period. And that gets presented to Jim.
Okay, yeah, fine.
So are you gonna, so anybody that wants to do any cutting on their land, they gotta go pay for a forester?
No. Timber.
Timber harvesting tech- activity, i- if you are timber harvesting, you're already doing that. I guess that's my point. If you are timber harvesting, if you, if some, if somebody is coming to harvest, if you are hiring a, a timber harvester to come in and forest your land, they, there's a number that you get and you can track where all, you know, everything that was taken off your property and where it's gone, where it's going.
Well, that's, and that's the mechanism that it gets to the town though, because right now there isn't one.
Yeah.
It gets to the state. State knows everything.
It doesn't get to the town.
Doesn't get to the town.
But if the state already has it, why does the town need to be bothered?
Well, you know, that's what, that's what we have right now. We're not, we're not changing anything. We're just making it a little easier for, for to have a record of it. Because.
The only, the only reason this. Linda, the only reason the state gets it is because there's a timber harvesting credit on your tax return.
No.
Yeah.
No, no. The harvester, no, the harvester needs to, is, is responsible for making, of where all that is going. It's, you know what I mean?
He's, he certifies it. He's, he certified.
Ted, but anyway, I'll find it.
You know, that's one of the, the things about the state's definition that I think uh, is good, because it's got that language in there about, um, for, uh, for commercial purposes. That's not the right clause. I should bring it up again.
Well, that's.
It's for, for, for the primary purpose of selling or processing forest products. That's what's missing from the towns. And I, and I agree with you, Ted. I, I, I like the, I like the town's definition, but it, it doesn't mean that we couldn't improve it by including that clause and the requirement uh, of a, uh, of, of forester's input or assessment that actually gets to the town.
Okay, I wasn't going to do that, but I, we could do that.
I guess. Maybe missing my point, but anyway, Ted, I cannot find. Point being, I cannot find the information on the website.
What are we going to do now?
Oh. I think at this point, we'll just table that and we'll continue having some discussion about it, decide what we want to do.
Uh, yeah, I would like to, um.
That would probably.
Exactly what Jim Nagel is looking to have done. Is Jim looking to?
Yeah, I found it, Linda. It's under planning board agenda submissions. It's all the way at the bottom.
All right, so if I go to.
Go to public records.
Public records.
Go to planning board.
Plan and board.
Go to planning board agenda submissions.
Plan and board, agenda minutes, videos, plan and board.
Not minutes, I said agenda submissions. It's all the way at the bottom. Planning board admissions.
Submissions.
Submissions, thank you very much. Yep, planning board agenda submissions. It's all the way at the bottom. And you go back and all the way to the bottom and it says timber, timber harvesting revisions, number two.
Oh my God.
It's been on docs. That's all the stuff that we're, these, these are all of the items that are on, that the planning board has in their packet as of today. I can't send it out to the planning board this way because it's too big. Come on, let me out.
So you're talking permit, no matter what they do.
A per- permit if you're doing, if you're, if you're gonna harvest, yeah.
What's?
If you're going to do a timber harvest for timber harvesting purposes as defined in here, right now, you, Jim's expecting to get a permit from you. And he says he basically, oh goodness, I lost you guys. I was afraid of this.
Nope, you're still there.
No.
Okay, I had to get up. I had to get out of the, the, uh, so this is something that Jim said, hey, I, I need to be able to track this every ten years. I need to know how many people cut and what they cut in a ten year period. I gotta have a way of tracking. So. Says, he has a permit, he has a development permit and some people fill it out and some people don't. So he asked us, hey, can you make it so that people will come and fill out the permits? So we said, okay, we'll do that. Just make it that you have to put in, you have to get a permit from Jim Nagel. I don't know what the selectmen are going to charge for, ten bucks, no bucks, I don't know.
What is the requirements for the permit?
Don't know. I think Jim just gets basically asked, I think, would Jim, no, seriously, I don't, I don't get involved in, but I, what Jim, what I've seen Jim do is they fill out the permit and they have a, I guess, a back of the envelope map and say, this is where I'm going to cut.
So you've got here, development permits must be secured by the code enforcement officer documenting the location and the amount of timber to be cut prior to harvesting.
Right.
So. I guess it's not, uh. I'll, I'll, I'll look it over. It doesn't sound like it's. But he's still not going to be able to track it.
Well, if he's got that, he'll be able to track who, who cuts within a ten year period.
Okay, so somebody comes in, they get a harvest, uh, they get a permit, they're gonna cut, say they only cut, they take out some dead wood, they take out a small percentage that doesn't even come close to the forty percent. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then in a couple of years, they want to go take out a, a little bit more. Well, no, you just got a permit, ten years, it's only been two years, you can't, you gotta wait ten years. Oh no, I don't have to wait ten, I only took out ten percent. I didn't take out forty, only took out ten. Who's going to determine that?
Jim is.
He's not.
He's the code enforcement officer.
The forester, the forester does.
Well, if we do.
The forester that someone's gonna have to hire now.
Well, if it's timber harvesting, then it, and it's, then it's for a commercial purpose.
Yeah.
That's not saying that's for commercial purposes. That's just any.
No.
Probably needs to.
Yeah, probably does. Cutting and removing trees from the growing site, tend an operation of cutting and skidding machinery, not to the construction of roads. Your harvesting does not include clearing of land for approved construction. Yeah, see, this is where the, the way the state has it written, I'm concerned about, you know, being able to cut on my, uh, on my, on, on my firewood lot, on my woodlot.
Isn't that?
Why?
Doesn't that make sense to amalg, you know, make an amalgamation of those two definitions? I mean, draw the best out of both.
A little better with the definition, because I don't like the, I don't like either definition.
I think there is some. Harvest, just, it, it, not, I mean, timber harvesting, right, it's what, you know.
It's harvesting timber for the purpose of harvesting. And it.
By definition.
So now you're gonna get into, then now you're gonna get into that whole thing about, like you did with the farmers about.
Well, we can end it the way it is and it'll be not, it'll be, it'll be very nebulous. It's nebulous now. And Jim will start busting people for not getting permits. I mean, he could do that. It just basically says, get a permit from Jim. Joe, so where are you gonna cut? It's kind of innocuous. The only thing to do is to remove it completely from all the ordinances where it's been since, I don't know, how long has it been? It's ninety nineties, ninety-eight? It's been around for a long time. The timber harvesting definition was amended in two thousand and seven. It was amended.
I think that forty percent thing is pretty common though. I mean, I think it's a state thing, right?
I haven't seen it in many other towns, to be honest.
I think it's in Kedebong ports too.
Yeah, well.
And it, it read the same thing, that whole thing with the shoreline zone and all that stuff.
Yeah.
I think that's probably, because that's probably state mandated too.
Or else Dan wrote theirs too.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. I, I have never seen it before. This is the first time I've ever been in that, that, or ever dealt with that actually had a timber harvesting ordinance.
Okay, okay, so we, we have one more item that we need to look at.
All right, wait, before we do that, what, what, what am I supposed to do? What are you guys gonna do?
We're gonna have to decide whether or not we want to address it or leave it the way it is.
Let's table it.
And I will, I will go talk to Jim Nagel next week and ask him what he would like to see.
All right.
And then, you know, we can go there and make it, and make a decision.
Okay.
Okay, so the last.
Or if it makes sense to have him put something in writing too, so that we all know what's going on.
Have you met Jim?
Yeah.
He doesn't like to put anything in writing.
Anything in writing.
Well, I'm just saying it, but I mean, if you were bringing this point up and you were bringing it up because he wants to see it done, it makes sense to have, okay, this is why we're doing this.
Like, you're getting him to approve or not to approve it. I think that's as far as I can get him to do it.
Okay, so we need to set public hearings for the proposed land use ordinance amendments. Eliminate the, the pre-existing registration process for contract the yards.
Right.
Because that law has sunsetted itself out.
Right.
Uh, accessory sheds and the shoreline zoning dimensional standards that we had changed and the state told us that we couldn't, then we had to change them back. But we, we need to hold public hearings on those three items.
Uh, when you want to do the, uh, the criteria for a stream protection district? I think you guys were all set with that.
I thought we were all set with that. I thought it was just the resource protection that, that we had.
But the point is that hasn't passed. You gotta, you get, you, you have to take that to public hearing. The existing criteria for the exemption. That, that hasn't gone through, uh, public hearing and it hasn't been passed yet.
Right, I.
Okay, so there's, because there's two shoreline zonings. One is, is, is the, the change in the dimensions. And, you know, we had to take the, uh, you know, we had to take the, the shoreline zoning for commercial back up to what the state wants. And so we will have, uh, basically four. Okay.
Yep.
You want, where do you want to do that, the, the twelfth?
I mean, after the first of the year.
No, I, I think we, I'm not sure. What do you think we'll, we'll end up looking at on the twelfth? We'll probably have a pretty busy schedule.
Well, you, you've got two subdivisions. Now, you have a site plan, you've got, I don't think Clitner is ready to go.
I don't, I don't think he'll be ready. I don't think a Rundle keep will be ready. I think, uh.
I think, I think Ronald keeps gonna want to push forward. You've got some hard decisions to make on that.
He's got, he's got a lot of stuff he's got to get done before.
That's not that hard. He's, what he, what he's got to do though is, is that whole argument about having these really marginal lots he's got that are absolutely tiny, that he wants to shoehorn some houses on, whether that's appropriate, whether that meets the basic concept of the, the shoreline, excuse me, of the, uh, subdivision ordinance. And again, you know, we're in a situation where we have poor soils. I mean, these are Dan, these are, these are a step above hydroic soils. Jamie, these are, these are non-burbs, uh, that are not very, that are poorly drained instead of not very, not very poorly drained. So we've got, we've got a problem with the, with the perch water table. We have lots, some of the lots, yeah, they're an acre, but effectively they're neck, these, these units are next to each other. And I'm really concerned, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to peer review the, uh, the nutrient loading models because they, they don't show much of a plume. I'm really kind of surprised at. Because there's no topography, so the plume should be, you know, should be circular. Then it shouldn't be, uh, it shouldn't be very topographic oriented, because there's no, there's no pitch on that property, so.
Right.
Right, guys, it's almost ten o'clock, so, um, I hate to, uh, rush things along. But should we decide whether or not we can vote on any of these things for the twelfth?
We've already. We've already decided on these. We just need to schedule a public hearing.
Right, so should we do it for the twelfth?
Twelfth or the fifth.
Uh, I'm open to either one.
I'd, I'd rather do it on the twelfth and get them done.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion. We scheduled on the twelfth. I'll second that.
Roger.
Motion was made and seconded to, to schedule the public hearings on the twelfth.
We'll carry on twelfth.
And you'll get those advertised out, Ted?
Yep. Actually, I might get, I might get Anne to do this. We've got a trainer how to do this stuff. So, yeah, we'll get that out, um, two weeks, so we'll, we'll have to get it out next week. All right, that sounds good. So that's the four. Got it. All right. And I don't think I have to, I'm, I'm looking to see, I don't think there's. I don't have to do a targeted, uh, notification. Because these are all townwide.
Yep.
So they're not district limited. Okay, that'll make it faster.
Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Ted.
Anything you need to report on to us?
Um, yeah, yeah, I can give you a quick, quick rundown. We're probably gonna have another ordinance request from somebody regarding, uh, medical marijuana. Um, for the, uh, the medical marijuana caregivers. You'll probably have a request by at least a letter. I already have a letter. But a request to change the zoning ordinance, um, criteria and eliminate the thousand foot, um, setback. From, um. From daycare centers and from churches. Retaining the school one because that is, is, that is the federal drug law. Shall not sell a schedule one drug within a thousand feet of a school. So, but you will be, you've already gotten a request to do that, to make that change. So. Bring it to the twelfth, I assume, or at least bring the letter to the twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we, I have that, uh, and I did go the, uh, the marijuana, uh, update by the, uh, by the state. And, uh, they've made some changes. They made some additional changes to caregivers. Uh, they finally licensed somebody at a production level, um, at the end of the last month. And, um, they're trying to roll it out now, finally. Um, not a lot of changes, uh, to adult. They're still working on some stuff on marijuana caregiver. And they, of course, they've expanded the caregivers because of the pressure that they've gotten from the caregiver community. Because, uh, they got undercut by the adult, um, usage. So they've got some, some, um. They, they allowed dispensaries and testing facilities and retail. And a caregiver can go retail. Uh, if the town opts in, it's an opt-in situation still. But they're, the performance standards are still under, uh, under, being worked on. So that is going forward, um, until we get some pressure. Otherwise, uh, we'll, we'll see what happens with this, with this change that's requested. See what the public response is to that. But, uh, anything else? Uh, been doing a lot of inspections. Uh, I was up at Oak Ridge today and. Oh, good thing Hisong has broken through and he has paved all the way to Liberty Acres. So with the planning, the planning board will recall that we had that restriction on him. That, um, he was limited to twenty-five homes until he came through and finished the second means of egress. And he's done that and, um, even though Gordy's got a little bit of a concern about letting it sit over the winter. Before he paved, um, I told him, go ahead and pave it because I couldn't see having that pavement sit over the winter. So he's got base coat down in the base course, all the way to, uh, to Liberty Acres and it looks good. And Gordy says it, it's, it's holding up fine and this warm weather helps. So, uh, we're gonna lift the twenty-five, uh, twenty-five house restriction on him now. Agreed?
Good, yep.
That was, that was, that was the planning board caveat. So that's gone. So that's going great guns, which is good.
What are they up to back there now Ted?
They're up to twenty-two, I think, or twenty-three. He's got about four more contracts and he wanted to get him, get him going before, uh, the winter. As you recall, I told him he had to pave at least. He had to get the base course down. And, uh, so he's done it. So he's doing well. He's still selling well. It's pretty strong. Still selling well at the cottages.
That brings up the issue, we're gonna have to talk either, probably in January about the, uh, building permits. We haven't, we haven't revisited that.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to take a look at that again.
That's, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a contentious, um, issue. Especially if we're really, you know, as I, I won't repeat myself too much, but if you may recall, if you, if we're gonna have all these alternative forms of housing, we want to attract. Because of the benefits to the community and provide for a broader base type of housing. We're not gonna be able to survive with multifamily or with age restricted housing and have, have the current. Um, standard of, the, the current limitations we have on, on issuing building permits, some of the growth management. Just can't, can't do it. If you're only given four, six units per year. Um, and they're not met it out until the end of each month. I mean, you can't do a multifamily or a PUD or an age restricted community. Those kind of limitations. That's really built for single family. It's not built for the other kind of activities.
Yep.
Just can't do it. So that's gonna be something that's gonna be tough to grapple with, but. If we want to attract those alternative types of housing, we're gonna have to change that ordinance. Or provide some provisions for a different standard for, uh, those kinds of activities. And the good thing is, in many, in some cases, especially with age restricted, the impact upon the schools will not be there or it'll be minimal. So, which is probably the costliest impact of fast growth.
Move to adjourn.
Yep. I got one more question for you before we do that.
I have to, I got a second on that.
We don't have enough time during a normal meeting to sit and discuss things like the housing. Things like, uh, the letter that we're going to get about, uh, making changes to, to the town's. Marijuana regulations, uh, things like timber harvesting.
Timber harvesting, yeah.
So I'm, I'm wondering if you would be amenable to doing a workshop on December fifth. Which is a Thursday, where we discuss some of these issues so that we can start working on them. Because if we don't. We're never gonna be able to get them addressed.
Not, not until this, not until the boom slows down, if it does.
I think we should just pick two or three items and just say, okay, let's, let's discuss these.
I'm good there.
I won't bill maker on that particular day.
Okay.
Home soon.
Yeah, we, Rich, are we, is this something we really need to do in the short term as opposed to? Were we trying to shoehorn it in before the twelfth?
Well, we won't have, we won't have time on the twelfth. So if, if we, if we don't do it on the fifth, then we're gonna be looking at doing it in January or February. And, and which is fine with me. I just, I just wanna get us started on, on getting some of it.
I think it's a really good idea, uh, but boy, I tell you, it's, uh, it's tough, you know, jamming things in to December anyway.
Okay. I, I've got no problem if we wait until, until after the first of the year and we start putting things together. We just need to start looking at some of this stuff and working on it.
I think you're right. I mean, I think it's tough to, to deal with it at the very end of every meeting. You know, we're, we're not operating, uh, at our best then. And these are important things because they guide. You know, future events very broadly. So I think it's a good idea to have the workshop, but I'd hope we can do it in January or February.
Okay. Tom, you wanna unmute yourself and make that motion again?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made and seconded. Everybody have a good day.
Yep.
And I'll, we'll see you. I'll see you on Saturday. I'll just.
Okay.
Rearrange what I was doing.
Sounds good. Thank you guys.